All right, City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Suffolk. Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Rue Simmons.
Here.
We have a call.
Terrific, thank you, and welcome, everybody, to the Monday, September 17th, 2018 Evanston City Council. It's been a while since we've all gathered, so it's nice to see everybody up here at the dais and everyone that's watching at home and here in the council chambers. We do have eight of our aldermen this evening. Alderman Rainey couldn't be with us this evening, as many people know. Sadly, a resident, a very recent resident of Northwestern, was murdered a block from Evanston on the Chicago side, 7,500 block, on Labor Day weekend on Sunday evening. Just a terrible, terrible, senseless murder. And Alderman Rainey has gone out to California to go to the young man's funeral and on behalf of the city. So, we send our prayers and our thoughts to Shane Colombo's family. He's 25 years old. He was an entering PhD student here in the Chicago Police Department, and others are working hard to try and solve this terrible, terrible crime. It's been probably five weeks since we last met. Our last meeting was on August 13th. Since that time, our community has lost two people who did a tremendous amount of work for the people of Evanston and had just a great, great spirit for this community. One of those was our beloved former mayor, Lorraine Morton, who passed away on September 8th, three months shy of her 100th birthday. For those of you who may not be familiar, Lorraine, or Mayor Morton, as she's affectionately known, was the first black mayor of Evanston, was the longest-serving mayor ever in our history, four terms, 16 years, and had a wonderful, wonderful spirit that just attracted so many people to her. And she will be missed, but fondly remembered, and I'm pretty certain her spirit is with a lot of people in this community and a lot of young people. She was an educator, an administrator, an alderman, a mayor, and just an amazing, amazing person. So, what I thought we could do this evening is I'm going to ask the aldermen if they would like, they can make a remark, because many people up here worked closely with her, and I'd like to do that at the beginning of this meeting. For those of you in the audience and those of you at home, I did want to pass on information. Her visitation will be this Friday from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it'll be at the First Church of God Christian Life Center, which is here in Evanston. It's 1524 Simpson Street, and that's from 3:00 to 8:00 on Friday. Her funeral will be this coming Saturday, September 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. at Alice Millar Chapel, which is at 1870 Sheridan Road. And so, there will be a time to see her family and pass on your condolences, and also to share and hear the stories of her magnificent life. So, with that, let me open it up if anyone else would like to add some words about Mayor Morton. Okay. How about Clerk Reed, and then Alderman Wilson?
Lorraine Morton is someone that I grew up knowing quite a bit about. She was, her tenure started around the time that my lifetime started. She was my mom's teacher, and I remember the first time I met Mayor Morton in person was actually while I was petitioning to run for clerk. She wasn't, she was very honest and direct, and that's one thing that I very much admire about her. And she was very honest and direct with me then, when we first met. But I was fortunate enough, after taking office, to have the opportunity to sit down with Mayor Morton and Hecky Powell at Northwestern event, and we talked for a good amount of She warmed up to me, I warmed up to her, and she was just a really wise, great, smart, sharp woman, especially being 90, I think, 99 or 98 at the time, just very quick, and someone that I just greatly admire. So, I'm glad to have had the opportunity to meet her and sit down and talk with her and gain some of her wisdom and experience her directness as well.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. Do you want me to give you one?
If I may.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see the light. Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Braithwaite.
Okay, thank you. So, it's kind of impossible to start cataloging 99 years of contributions to the community. We'd be here a very long time. It seems like everybody I know has not just one story, but many stories about Lorraine Morton and what she's committed and provided to our community. But I think from a personal level, the thing that I really valued and treasured were just those candid conversations, whether I'd run into her at the store, or I would see her at a meeting, or she would reach out to me. It was just the ease with which she could approach someone and really have a valuable conversation. And it wasn't ever her telling me, you know, if she had an opinion, she'd let you know, but it was always a conversation with her, at least that was my experience. And that's a great role model. I really value that interaction and those conversations, and I remember so many of them, and I'm grateful for that. But, you know, she's committed, I'm sorry, provided so much for our community and our neighborhood. But for me, she just really enhanced my experience in doing this job, and I really value that greatly.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Braithwaite, and then Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm laughing because there's another side to her that we also know and love, and she was fierce and honest and a true advocate for black people in this town, as well as community-wide. So, I will miss our direct conversations. The words of wisdom obviously go without saying. I think it's a rite of passage that many of us enjoyed, going to her house for breakfast. And if you set aside two hours for the conversation, she would always extend that time. She was a strong woman of faith, and I think that that's also, that should be remembered, and she loved her church. And I could not think of a better example of a public servant that our town has had. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to share the words, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wynn, and then I've got Alderman Rue Simmons.
Well, Alderman Wilson and Clerk Reed and Alderman Braithwaite have really said some wonderful things, all of which I would say. Mayor Morton was, she led such an extraordinary life, and yet she was such an accessible person. And she seemed to sort of break those barriers kind of effortlessly, but you knew that there was steel behind it all. When, as I gradually learned more and more about, I knew her first as mayor, and when I gradually learned more about her prior accomplishments, it made me appreciate even more the hard work and effort that she had put in and the ways that she had served our communities, and they were just endless. And I think everyone does have a story about her wisdom, but also her real zest for life. You know, boy, did she have it. And I can't tell you the number of times that we would stagger out of here at 1:00 in the morning, and I'd look over at Mayor Morton and think, "She's 86? I want to be like her," you know, when I'm that age. And just today, I was talking with Alderman Revelle, and I was saying, "You know, it feels, Evanston feels different," somehow knowing that she's passed on. But what a life, and a life worthwhile. She certainly was truly the public servant that we all would aspire to be.
Indeed. Thank you, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Rue Simmons, and then Alderman Revelle.
Thank you. A moment just isn't enough to have comment on Mama Morton, Miss Morton, Mayor Morton, depending on who was telling the story. And I grew up in a household where Mama Morton was a name. And I can't tell you how much taller I felt after going for my brunch at Mayor Morton's house, and I took lemon cake and some flowers and was a bit nervous, but as everyone stated, so direct, so unapologetic and real, really leaving, examining self after you have sat with Mayor Morton. And what an honor and a privilege to live in the neighborhood where she resided for six decades and served and led as a black woman. I agree, the city doesn't feel the same, but certainly, I'm hoping that, I know that I will, I hope that everyone else will dig deep and find purpose and add something of value to the community, because she did it until the last day, so.
Here, here, thank you. Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Fisk.
Well, in addition to all the memories that you all have been sharing about what an amazing public servant she was, what a wonderful example she was to all of us for how we could all try to do a better job for our community, the conversation I had earlier today with Alderman Wynn was, we were talking also just about her amazing sense of humor and zest for life. And I first got to know Mayor Morton when she was principal at Haven. And she was legendary for participating in the Haven Help Us performances every year, and there was the one year where she donned her black leather jacket and she brought a motorcycle onto the stage, because that was part of the show that year. So, she was just an unstoppable force for life, and we'll really, really miss her.
Thank you, Alderman Revelle. Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I first got to know Lorraine when we were both on the Board of Directors at the History Center, and I was so incredibly impressed with her. I don't know anyone else who, when she walked into the room, she just took over the whole room. She didn't have to say a word, but her presence just filled that room, and it was really inspiring. It had to make you smile all the time. And I was thinking today that I don't really remember seeing her without a smile on her face. It's just really incredible. But the standards that she set were high. I mean, she expected all of us to respect our jobs, and not only respect our jobs, but to respect our role in the community and our appearance. So, if you hadn't gotten your nails done, maybe she'd ask you why you hadn't gotten your nails done. So, whenever I would talk to her, I'd always be really sure that I tried to look my best, because I knew she'd be looking at me. But I just, I think she was just an amazing, an amazing person, and just the genuine quality of her. What you saw is what you got. I mean, there was no artifice there. It was all very real. And that's a very rare quality, especially in the work that we do and the people that we deal with. That's a very rare quality, and I appreciated that very much.
Great, thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Fleming, and then we've got Alderman Suffolk.
Yeah, so, obviously, everyone had some interaction with her, and probably, like Alderman Rue Simmons, you know, I had family stories of her, and so, I only knew her as the principal at Haven, of the school I didn't go to, but more so that she lived on the corner when we would walk to the snackery. And so, you would frequently see her, you know, in the yard or on her porch when I was going to get my penny candy, and she would always have something to say about, "Don't eat too much candy," or, you know, whatever she was trying to encourage us to do or not to do when we passed her house. But, you know, when I ran for office and I, like everyone else, kind of made the customary visit of, not necessarily permission, but seeking guidance from her during my campaign, you know, it was very interesting, because we started the conversation, and I think, I don't know how she kept up with who's who, but I don't know what I mentioned that reminded her of the family that I came from. And so, she went into this entire family lineage of people who I knew and didn't know, and how she has served on council with three of my family members and so on and so forth. And so, she was very candid in telling me what she liked and didn't like about the previous people in my family who had served in the fifth ward alderment, and what she wanted me to do and not to do, and how to conduct myself, because I'm a short, black woman, and just so much to say. And as Alderman Braithwaite said, you know, I went over and I was going to stay for an hour, and it was two hours, and I was calling my children to say I was coming, and it was four hours. And finally, I, you know, was able to end the conversation polite enough, but I would love that every time I saw her, she would just squeeze your hand, and you'd think you're just going in for a little kiss, and she'd have some kind of advice she was giving you, and then she'd pull you closer, and she'd say, "Baby," and then you'd be sitting down, and then again, you'd just learn to not look at your clock, and you were just receiving whatever she was saying, and you would nod. And so, I just loved, you know, whenever I saw her. For me, it was always very personal, because she had done so many things with various members of my family that she would always recount, and their version would sometimes be different, but she could always tie it back to what I needed to be doing, what I wasn't doing, what she heard I had done on council, what I didn't do on council. So, I appreciate that, and I hope that if I do look to 99, my memory is as good as hers was, and that I'm unapologetic in giving my advice and opinion to people in a loving way.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Suffolk. And then we've got Mr. Bob Quetz.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, my first encounter with Mrs. Morton was as my principal in 1989, and I think there's going to be a lot of nice things said, and they're all well-deserved, and I think what that Mrs. Morton would say now is, "Let's get to work."
And Mr. Bob Quetz.
When I was first appointed city manager, I, of course, came from outside the community, and Mayor Tisdale, newly-elected mayor, asked me to spend a Saturday with her, and I said, "Great, I'm happy to do whatever you'd like." And we got in her car, and we went to Mayor Morton's house, and I was not prepared for this. All I knew was, I was the new city manager, the mayor wanted me for half a day, I was going to go wherever the new mayor asked me to go, and all of a sudden, I'm sitting in the living room of this nice lady, who I really didn't know who she was initially. Quickly, though, knew and quickly spent the regulars a couple of hours hearing the history of the city of Evanston and the history of every city manager that she worked for. And as Mayor Tisdale often joked, we had a two-mayor system at that time in Evanston. There were many, many events where I staffed Mayor Morton up until this year at the Martin Luther King event, making sure she got where she needed, and it was always a great pleasure. But I really want to say on behalf of all the staff that worked with Mayor Morton all of those years, in talking with staff members, she had that same impact, that she would reach out and touch your hand and be honest and straightforward. And the role that we play as staff, that's a unique circumstance to have someone, a mayor, a four-term mayor, do that. So, really, on behalf of all of us who have been fortunate enough to work with Mayor Morton over the years, it was always a pleasure for all of our staff to make sure that we do what it takes to make Evanston a special place, and I know everyone who worked with her was always very proud that she was our mayor.
Great. Thank you, everybody. And as I mentioned, the services visitation will be Friday, 3:00 to 8:00, and the funeral will be on Saturday at 11:00 a.m., and there'll be lots of opportunity to continue to memorialize and celebrate the life of Lorraine H. Morton. We have several announcements. As I mentioned, it's been a long time since we had the last meeting, but I want to recognize four proclamations, two that we actually have folks here in the audience that I would like to recognize and come up, and actually read the proclamations, and two others. Let me just go. The two others are, it's National Preparedness Month, which is important, particularly in light of what we've all witnessed occur over the last couple of days, and is frankly still occurring down in the Carolinas, and the importance of being prepared. I don't know if, did Chief Scott want to say anything on this, Chief, or?
We do have personnel that have been dispatched through mutual aid agreements. Perhaps Chief, you could talk a little bit about the personnel that have been dispatched.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, City Clerk Reed, City Manager Bob Quetz, Fire Chief Brian Scott, good evening. Yes, it's September is National Preparedness Month, and we take that opportunity to kind of remind ourselves to properly prepare for those unforeseen disasters and those severe weather events. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of just reach out to the community and let them know that there's a lot of great resources within the city of Evanston for them to do just that. They can go to our emergency preparedness website, they can get resources, and also to make sure that they really take advantage of our Evanston Alert System, which is a way for us to communicate to them if we have a local emergency. I should also mention, as part of this month, FEMA and the FCC will be doing a nationwide kind of outreach for emergency preparedness and for alerting. So, this Thursday on the 20th at around 1:18 in the afternoon, most of the cell phones within the United States, as well as all of our radio and TV stations, will have that emergency alerting message go out. Mayor Hagerty mentioned Hurricane Florence, and that we had some people mobilized with the Evanston Fire Department. Fortunately, in both cases, they mobilized but did not deploy. Now, we may still have, one of our members deploys the Cook County Swift Water Rescue Team, but right now, they're kind of in a holding pattern. But we were able to get our resources mobilized, and we were at the ready to have one of our engine companies and four firefighters, and one of our members on that Swift Water Rescue Team deploy out to North Carolina, and we were looking forward to helping them in any way that we could. So, again, to all the community, really take that opportunity to plan ahead, and that's the theme. Prepare now and learn how. That's going to be FEMA's message. And as the Director of FEMA likes to point out, proper disaster response really is kind of four legs of a very important share. It's the federal government, it's state and local, it's some of those private partnerships, but that last piece is the most important. It's us, the community, us taking care of each other as neighbors. And so, the city of Evanston has a lot of great resources for us to do that, and I encourage everyone to take advantage. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief, and thank you for offering to help those in the Carolinas. Any of us that are parents know that diapers aren't cheap, and babies use a lot of diapers. And so, we did a proclamation, or I did a proclamation this month for National Diaper Need Awareness Week, which there's a tremendous need, actually, for diapers out there. We have an organization here in Evanston that has been here for quite some time called Bundled Blessings, and Bundled Blessings actually delivers over 16,000 diapers, free of charge, to people here in this community to help them. So, I think I did some calculation, like, you know, real quick, and it was like, you know, each child uses something like 7,000 diapers before they're out of diapers. So, does that sound about right, Alderman Suffolk? All right. So, anyway, so we did a proclamation for that. There's two others, and I'd like, we'll do these separately. First off is a proclamation to celebrate the 70th anniversary of Delta Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. So, ladies, we have several of you. Why don't you come on up here? We'll have you come up to the podium right here. And I'm just going to, I'm going to go ahead and read this, because your work has been notable, and I want people at home and people here in the audience and up here in the dais to know. Whereas the Delta Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. was chartered in Evanston on June 25th, 1948 by 19 Evanston women. And whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. is the first Greek-letter organization established by and for college-educated black women. And whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority serves all people with a focus on issues affecting women and girls. And whereas the Delta Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority supports Evanston students by providing literacy and college and career readiness and programming. And whereas the Delta Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha has awarded more than 500 scholarships to Evanston students and distributed over $200,000 in financial assistance. And whereas the Delta Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha donates hundreds of service hours each year to support women, children, and others here in our Evanston community, now therefore I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, the mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim today, September 17th, 2018, as Delta Chi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. Day in the city of Evanston to celebrate your 70 years of amazing and terrific work. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, ladies. 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 Thank you. All right. And we have one other amazing organization to recognize this evening, who is celebrating their 25th anniversary, and that is the Warren Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund. And so, we have several folks there. Come on up here, folks, just like the others, and come up to the podium, and we're going to go ahead and recognize all of you and the terrific work that folks have done with the Cherry Scholarship Fund. If you guys want to face, you could just do the other, face the council, I'll read it to you, and stuff like that, if you want, or? All right. So, whereas the Warren Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund was established in 1993, both in memory and honor of Warren Billy Cherry, a beloved educator and community leader in Evanston. And whereas the Warren Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund recognizes the importance of supporting students and successfully reaching their goals. And whereas the Warren Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund is devoted to supporting ETHS graduates who are committed to teaching and/or working with children. And whereas the Warren Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund awards scholarships to students who have demonstrated financial need, overcome poor academic achievement, lack of focus, or other hardships. And whereas the Cherry Scholarship Fund over the last 25 years has awarded 216 scholarships to undergraduate and graduate students pursuing degrees, full or part-time, in the fields of education or youth work. And whereas the Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund awarded the first scholarship in 1993 in the amount of $2,500, which has increased to scholarships awarded in 2018 in the amount of $50,000. And whereas the Cherry Scholarship Fund continues to rely on the efforts of volunteers to support its mission in order to enrich the Evanston community, now therefore I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, the mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim September 29th, 2018, which is the day of the big celebration, okay, as Warren Billy Cherry Scholarship Fund Day in the city of Evanston in celebration of your 25th anniversary and the extraordinary impact you have made on Evanston youth. Thank you. 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 All right. And if you were, if you were moved by that and everything that the Warren Cherry Scholarship Fund has done, tickets are still available to that Saturday, September 29th event. All right. That concludes, that concludes my announcements. I do wanna, it concludes my announcements. We did in August, on that August 13th, a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month. And I've heard from a lot of people about, you know, that proclamation and what we did that evening, that a lot of people were moved by it. I appreciated everybody this past weekend that came out for the walk along the way, the lake for, for the suicide prevention and the work that people are doing there. So with that, City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I have an update for the diligence we've been doing regarding the Lincoln Street Beach. We have been in touch with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, have reviewed the documents that were submitted by Northwestern University for their recent improvements in the area and have determined through IDNR that that property, the Lincoln Street Beach is not the property of Northwestern University. I cannot tell you whose property it is this evening, but through that permitting process it was identified as not belonging to the university. The city and IDNR and Northwestern will continue to meet and discuss next steps. We'll get further information from IDNR about the beach and will, I will share with them the city of Evanston's interest in the coordination control, perhaps ownership of that beach and see what options, opportunities there may be with that. So that will be forthcoming. I don't suspect to have additional updates over the next few weeks, but when I do, I will, we'll put it on an agenda so that we can discuss it.
Great. Thank you, thank you. City Clerk, any communications?
Yes. Quickly run through a few. It's been a while. So election time is coming around again. Early voting starts October 22nd. If you want to give me an early birthday gift, my birthday is October 23rd, you can go early vote, you can come early vote here at the Civic Center. Election day is of course November 6th. Mail-in ballot applications are available in the Clerk's office. If you need to register to vote or update your voter registration, you can do so at the Clerk's office or online. You can Google online voter registration or you can call the office and request a mail-in ballot application. We are also, for National Voter Registration Day, which is next Tuesday, we're looking to organize volunteers to post at several city facilities to register voters and to go out into the community and register voters and continue that effort through election day to inform folks of the upcoming election. We are specifically targeting areas that have lower voter turnout. The fifth ward is one area of particular interest. So you can either call the office at 847-448-8189 or email us at cityclerk@cityofevanston.org if you'd like to participate. And we'll have some stuff, some advertisements circulating online with an easy link to sign up to volunteer and help register folks and inform folks of the upcoming election. You also, while supplies last, you'll get a very swagful t-shirt if you volunteer with us as well. Secondly, the Clerk's Office has put out an office guide. Those are available on the table, they're also available in the office and they will be available at a number of places in the community where you can, throughout the guide, there are maps and there's information on accessing local government. So you can more fully make your voice heard as well as a bit of interesting history about the Clerk's Office and the council as, and the city as a whole. I'm sure council members, we wanted to get you a copy done so you could read it for us. And next week Deputy Clerk Gomez will be here on the dais. I intended for next week to be the, the first time that he sat on the dais. I was unfortunately out one meeting. It is Mexican-American History Month and Deputy Clerk Gomez is the first Latino to ever sit on this dais as a, as an official. And so next week, in honor of that, he will sit here as well as give a very, very small statement. Yes. Then lastly, we have one communication from the Citizens Network of Protection regarding the new selection process for a police chief. I was, there was a request that I share this letter with the council and read it. It's a short letter. Dear Council, dear City Council meetings, I'm reading it verbatim. Dear City Council meetings, as you know, on September 5th, there was a public meeting at the Civic Center hosted by the city manager to inform citizens about the process for selecting a new police chief. An additional purpose of the meeting, and from our perspective the most important, was to solicit input from citizens concerning their viewpoints on appropriate criteria for selecting a new police chief. It was very clear to those of us that attended that meeting that Evanston citizens require and want more opportunities to present their views and give input on the process and on the candidate that will eventually be selected for this vitally important post. We do not believe that the public was given sufficient advance notice of the meeting and thus key individuals as well as certain affected groups were not well represented or even present. As an example, six of Evanston's aldermen were absent. Additionally, the timing and logistics of the meeting had a disparate impact on important stakeholders. Evanstonians who are senior citizens, younger folks, people below the age of 24, persons of color, the homeless, and lower-income residents. It is essential that Evanston residents who are working for oversight, accountability, and transparency of the police department in our community receive notice that is reasonably calculated to reach the largest number of people and to maximize participation by the community. We call on you as the elected representatives of the community to make provisions to ensure that the concerns of a broad cross-sections of, cross-section of residents can be heard and that ordinary citizens be able to provide input. At the last meeting, the city manager indicated that there would be several panels, including the city council, to interview finalists. We propose that the panel of residents should also participate in that process. Additionally, it is vital to the selection process that our elected representatives familiarize themselves with each of the candidates. That will increase the probability that the best-suited individual emerges from the selection process. This is too important a decision with far-reaching impacts for the city of Evanston to be made by any single person. It thus cannot be a decision made by the city manager and rubber stamped by the city council. We respectfully ask the city therefore, we respectfully ask that the city have at least three or four additional meetings so that any residents who were unable to attend the meeting on the 5th, including those with different schedules, may attend. And this is signed by the Citizens Network of Protection, Elizabeth Meadows, who's with the Roosevelt University, Pastor Daniel Rune, who's with Grace Lutheran Church, Elliot Zation, Carlos Sutton, Ray Friedman, Madeleine Decree, Denny and Henry, I apologize if I pronounced that name incorrectly, and Henetu Sias. And so I will distribute this to the council as well.
Great. Thank you, thank you Clerk Reed. Okay. I believe Eleanor, our Alderman Revelle has an item and then we'll get to a public comment.
Yes. Thank you, Madam, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add sort of last-minute piece of business, which is consideration of an application for a special event permit for September 29th. This would be a special event permit for a University of Michigan alumni event at Canal Shores Golf Course in connection with the NU Michigan football game on the 29th.
Okay, there's a second. Okay, seeing no, no lights. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Okay, we have a light?
Why don't you give us just a little more background?
Oh, you know, you know what, actually, this is just to add to the agenda, not to discuss it. Then it'll be discussed at the end.
Okay. Just, well, I still think-
As a part of discussion, do you want it added? I mean...
I understand. I think maybe it'd just be useful, and I think some people will speak a public comment and likely to lead. So if you just kind of explain that this didn't come out of nowhere, just very, very, very briefly.
Right. So this is, the reason this is coming so late is I felt we needed to have a neighborhood meeting so the neighbors could hear about this special event, answer any questions and make sure that the event was going to have as little impact on the neighborhood as possible. This is for an alumni event at the third hole of the golf course at the corner of Gerard and Central. And there had been an event there the previous year with considerable impact on the neighborhood. And so I felt it was important to have a neighborhood meeting this time to make sure we addressed the aspects of the previous events to make sure it was going to work well for the neighbors. So anyway, the timing of that event meant that the special event permit application didn't get submitted in time to be considered this evening.
And so this is, for this evening, this is for introduction and discussion later on? That's what you're looking for, Alderman Revelle?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna be looking for us to direct the city manager to handle this special permit, special event permit, and for us to then concur with his action when we meet again in October.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to, to brief the council on Illinois state law on this matter, the city council has the ability to amend the agenda, but when the agenda is amended, the item for which it is amended, the council does not have the ability to take final action. And so, so at that same meeting. And so what Alderman Revelle will be proposing is a general direction to the city manager to negotiate the terms of that permit and then bring it back to the council at your next meeting on the 8th, which is currently planned for the 8th of October.
The motion is to add it to the agenda right now. Okay.
Alderman Brathwaite?
I guess just as a matter of parliamentary procedure, why not make a referral and then have it come back as an action item?
There's time.
There's no time.
There's no time.
But we're not taking action on it tonight, so we would-
No, we, we don't, we can't take action on it, but we can direct the city manager to, to act on our behalf and then we will concur with his action when we meet again. Because it's, it seems that we're not going to be meeting next week.
After it's done, okay.
And Alderman Brathwaite, members of the council, the, the key feature to the state law is final action. So the, the council may take an intermediate step, but it may not take final action until your next regular meeting.
Okay. Clerk Reed?
I'm just gonna request pursuant to the council rules that we get that motion in writing to accurately reflect it in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay. So right now, the, the motion was put forward to add this item to the agenda tonight to discuss it. We will do that after we discuss any items pulled off of the consent agenda. It was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item will be added to the agenda for discussion later this evening. Okay, with that, we're gonna move to public comment. This evening, we've got 13 people that have signed up for public comment. I think everybody knows the rule, but we set aside 45 minutes. That means three minutes, up to three minutes if you need it, per speaker. I ask that everybody just be respectful of one another and the folks up at this dais. If you're getting close to the three minutes, I'll just give you a nudge when you're about 15 seconds up to three minutes and ask that you wrap it up. And with that, we will, we will begin. We've got Linda Damaschek, Carl Bova, and then Laurie Keenan.
Good evening. Linda Damaschek. I would like to make public note of how the Evanston Lighthouse Dunes Group's plans and obligations have substantially diminished over time. While the more appropriately termed demolition group has been vocal about their aspirational goals, the MOU is signed between the demo group and the city, does not oblige them to deliver on any of their promises, short of tearing down the Harley-Clark House. Deconstruction, still listed as the intention on the demo group's website, is now really demolition. The MOU makes no mention of the Jen's Johnson Gardens, the dunes, or the beach, so the demo group's promises to retain, restore, and expand these areas are absolutely empty. Indeed, the only landscaping obligation imposed on the demo group is for tree removal and deferred landscape maintenance. And the cornerstone of the demo proposal, a cost-free gift to the city, is in reality anything but. Countless expenses have been excluded from the cost projection, which is estimated to be more than double the $400,000 cited by the city. This is both through omission of costs such as engineering, project management, and true environmental remediation beyond the unrealistically low city estimate, but also through disregarding the many, many caveats and exclusions included in the very demolition estimates the city has based their costs on. The MOU is written to allow the demo group the option to accept or decline to pay additional costs beyond the $400,000 offer, but only at the bid stage before any work begins. What of the project costs realized after a demolition partner is chosen? Under the wording of the MOU, the city has no ability to recoup these costs and the demo group has been consistently vocal in their refusal to provide the blank check that the project requires, given the poor state of site information available. Who would be left with the costs of a half-demolished building? The city and the taxpayers. This is the reality of the MOU, which is not the same picture as what is being sold to the public. It is time for the council to take a real look at the MOU as signed by the city manager, really consider if this MOU fully and truthfully reflects the amendment proposed by Alderman Rue Simmons on July 23rd of no cost to the city. The content of two council-passed amendments and the very promises that the demolition group continues to proclaim. I would like to give all council members a chart which will help you understand the difference between what the public proclamation is and what the reality is, the legal reality of the MOU. It's purely factual-
10 seconds.
Purely factual and the reality of the MOU is at the end of the chart. It's chronological.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, next up, we've got Carl Bova, then Laurie Keenan, then Jen Shader.
Carl Bova, seventh ward. I'm also speaking about the Harley-Clark Memorandum of Understanding. I was just thinking about the fact that it's really impossible to commit to this project without conducting a Phase One environmental and Phase Two environmental studies. It further got me to think about a handful of real project costs that I suspect that you have not considered as real burdens to the city of Evanston's taxpayers. The Memorandum of Understanding can't guarantee no cost to the city. Such a guarantee would have to include all of the following project costs. One, city staff planning time and management. Two, a Phase One environmental study and report. Three, a Phase Two environmental study and report, and environmental sampling and testing. Four, detailed engineering plans for the Harley-Clark demolition. Five, detailed engineering plans for water main relocation since the water main serviced to the beach comes from Harley-Clark. Six, demolition construction cost. Seven, demolition construction observation. Eight, demolition construction administration. Nine, detailed plans for lighthouse beach access areas since it will have to be repaired. Water main construction costs. Site restoration plans for Harley-Clark site. Site restoration construction for the Harley-Clark site. Thirteen, site restoration construction observation. Fourteen, site restoration construction administration. And finally, fifteen, a contingency. And for a project like this with the unknowns, if I was a contractor, I would heavily fudge, if you, if you will, or pad my bid to reflect the real danger of not being paid. When I total up all of these individual items, and they are rather real, they represent quite a staggering figure. And if I gave it to you, which I am gonna do, you, you'll be floored and you'll think, how is this possible? But if you really look at all 15 of those items, it is possible.
I need the number. I need the number, like 10 seconds.
And that figure is...
Yep.
$3.34 million. Thanks.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
$3.4 million. Okay. Next up, we've got Laurie Keenan, Jen Shader, then Ally Harnett.
Hi, my name is Laurie Keenan. I live in the 7th Ward. On behalf of the more than 3,000 Evanston residents who signed a petition to put this item on the ballot for an advisory referendum in November, and the several thousand more who petitioned their individual aldermen to support preservation of the Harley-Clark mansion and Jen's Jensen Gardens, in the name of transparency, I would like to ask that the amounts of individual donations be shared with the public. In an email to me on August 14th, the city manager told me, and I quote, "Pursuant to the MOU once executed, the city will disclosure sick all donations, donors, and amounts." That has not happened, though I have asked. Because the Dunes Demolition Group is not a not-for-profit, they don't have to operate for the public good. Of the 41 original pledges, there are now 32 actual donors. Of those, 47% live in the 7th Ward, 31% live within 1,500 feet of the mansion. There are four from the 1st Ward, one from the 5th Ward, four from the 6th Ward, and no donors at all from the 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 9th Wards. This is in contrast to, and this isn't even an updated number, but in terms of petition signatures, and this is not the 3,000 people who signed to get a referendum on the ballot, in the 1st Ward, 552 people for preservation, in the 2nd, 172 for preservation, 3rd, 289, 4th, 250, 5th, 97, 6th, 256, 7th Ward, 695, 8th Ward, 165, and the 9th Ward, 256 people favoring preservation. There are three donors from the 8th Ward, including the 8th Ward alderperson herself and two constituents that she recruited to give the appearance of citywide support, including her campaign manager, who later challenged the referendum. A family foundation for another de facto campaign manager for the 1st Ward alderperson is also on the donor list, even though that family foundation is located in Willmette, yet paying to destroy an Evanston public asset. The 8th Ward alderperson's name was added to the list only after I brought it to the city manager's attention that she had openly admitted to donating but was not named on the list. And interestingly, on Saturday, former Mayor Liz Tisdale's name appeared on the donor list, but then suddenly disappeared just as quickly. This is notable since it was Mayor Tisdale who appointed our current mayor, Steve Hagerty, to chair the Citizens Committee on Harley-Clark, where despite the fact that 86% of the public polled supported to preserve the mansion, and the committee still came to no consensus.
Laurie, you've got 10 seconds.
In a recent Chicago Tribune article, Mayor Hagerty was quoted saying, "There needs to be transparency. If the money's coming from members of the community, we absolutely need to know who and that there's no sinister motive behind it. Evanston residents demand transparency on this topic. Donor names and amounts, individual amounts, should be revealed. If someone's paying $25 and another's paying $250,000, the public should know."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jen Shader, Ally Harnett, then Jim Janasek.
Good evening, Jennifer Shader, 7th Ward, 47 years. I'm actually speaking tonight, or here tonight, to read a letter on behalf of State Representative Laura Fein of the 17th District. Mayor Hagerty, council members, and city manager, Bob Kowits, as an elected official representing part of the city of Evanston, I am hearing from constituents who are concerned about the future of the Harley-Clark mansion. For many residents, Harley-Clark represents the city's cultural and historical heritage. For this reason, I am urging the city not to demolish the landmark structure, but instead grant all sides more time to research all options for a creative solution. An issue that engenders so much passion from everyone is deserving of a deliberate, thoughtful process and a creative approach. Demolition of Harley-Clark will be irreversible and should not be done until all other alternatives have been absolutely exhausted. There are options to explore, including a potential partnership with the state of Illinois. As an elected official, we have to be stewards of taxpayer dollars, but we are also tasked with protecting and preserving our cultural, historical, and natural resources. The Harley-Clark mansion and the land it sits upon is such a resource. I respectfully stand with many Evanstonians, Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, and State Representative Robin Gabel in asking the city to look at all possible options before making an irreversible decision. Thank you for your consideration. Kind regards, Laura Fein. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Ally Harnett, Jim Janasek, and then Alice McQueen, or Mulqueen? I'm having trouble reading the name.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, City Clerk. Election Day in Evanston is 50 days away, and we at Save Harley-Clark are excited because of all the hard work of all of our amazing volunteers, and despite three objections to the referendum question, there will be a referendum question on the ballot that will give the people of Evanston a chance to voice their opinion about whether or not this elected body should use your power to stop demolition of the public asset that is the only public lakefront home on the lake in Evanston. We are excited to have the next 50 days to talk to Evanston voters about why the building should be preserved for all of us, why it should reopen to benefit the entire Evanston community, and why demolition is a shameful option to choose. I enjoyed speaking with my fellow, I enjoyed speaking with my fellow 2nd Ward residents during and after the ward meeting last Thursday night, and I found that all of those who I spoke with were planning to vote yes on November 6th. While we do continue to understand that city council is not bound to follow the recommendation of the referendum, to borrow language from a fellow Evanstonian, it is patently absurd to assert that the referendum is not a democratic process. Although Evanston has a representative democracy, we residents of the city sit at the top of the organizational chart, and we believe that you have the obligation to serve the public interests of all of us, not just a small but hawkish minority. It is time to listen to the people. In the next 50 days, you will be seeing lots of yard signs, rallies, and emails, lots of people on the streets, lots of stickers and buttons and t-shirts, because we believe that it is very appropriate to engage in the electorate in an issue that affects all of us. We believe that the referendum is a wonderful use of our time. The personal contact that we are having with our neighbors and friends, old and new, is inspiring and transformational. I truly believe that this is an opportunity for people to come together to talk about our shared vision for the city and to learn how a restored and revitalized Harley-Clark can become an economic engine and a thriving community asset that serves everyone. My personal dream about this whole thing, I've said this before, is that it becomes something that actually brings the city together more than divides it. I really believe that this can happen as long as truth prevails and power is appropriately distributed. And I believe in my heart that someday, this council and all of Evanston will support a fully funded plan that makes sense and opens the doors to our community lake house. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ally. Good job with your time this week.
Join us at saveharleyclark.org.
All right. Jim, we've got Jim Janasek, and then it looks like Alice McQueen, then Dave Davis.
Hi, I'm Jim Janasek, 28-year resident in the 9th Ward. Last Thursday, I was at the Levy Center watching the budget presentation stream, and I submitted a question, which was addressed but not answered. This was my question. Why are bed and breakfast lodgings exempt from collecting the hotel occupancy tax when hotels and vacation rentals must do so? The city manager read my question and replied, "They were exempt because hotels are 10 units or more and bed and breakfasts were not." No mention was made of the 150-plus vacation rentals, which are listed under the same ordinance. The name of this tax was changed this year from the hotel motel tax to the hotel motel and vacation rental tax. The definition of hotel is clearly defined in the code, in the ordinance here, as is the definition of vacation rental. Bed and breakfast lodgings clearly fall under vacation rental as defined in the ordinance, yet they are exempt from collecting and remitting the 7.5% tax to the city of Evanston. Why are they exempt? And how many other similar exemptions does the city make to other businesses that we don't know about? The city is facing a $7.5 million deficit and chooses to exclude some businesses from collecting and remitting taxes that, for the most part, come from people who live outside of Evanston. Why? Perhaps this is an isolated incident, but if it is not, then how many other exemptions is the city making on taxes and fees that should be collected but are not? Thank you.
Thank you for coming out, Jim. Alice McQueen, Dave Davis, and Janod Rizki.
I work in education. Okay, I'm here on behalf of the low-income residents of the city of Evanston. I don't know if you all are aware of what happens if you accidentally park in an area that then becomes a tow zone. You guys know the fees involved? No? Maybe you do, maybe you don't. So the towing fees involved here are $155 for an initial tow. After two hours, you pay a $50 impound fee in addition to the $40 ticket. So minimum, you're looking at $245 here when your car is towed. Okay? I'm sure you're probably aware of the income of the low-income residents here. So 9%, and these are charts that aren't exactly current, I apologize, it's within the past couple of years, 2016, is 9% from $10,000 to $20,000. $20,000 to $30,000 is 10%. Okay, so we've got 19% that are pretty low-income of your residents, and that is 14,000 people. 14,000 people would pay $245 to get their car out of impound just to go to work, and 46% of your residents in Evanston drive to work on a daily basis. That monthly income, if you make $30,000 a year, you make $2,500 a month. That is almost 10% of your monthly income. If you are $20,000 a year earner, you make $1,600 a month. Almost 15% of your monthly income is going to go towards getting your car out of impound just to go to work. My question for all of you is, what city do you want to be? Do you want to be an inclusive city? Do you want to be a place that welcomes low-income residents, that welcomes diversity? Because what this tells me is that you are not interested in that. This is not an acceptable amount of money for somebody to pay. In addition, I have here, you can compare fees for the state of Illinois. A red light and stop sign violation, $120. Possession of marijuana under 10 grams, $100 to $200. That is less. I could possess marijuana and get pulled over and ticketed for that and pay less than I would to get my car back from impound. This is for accidentally parking in an area that turns into a tow zone overnight. Okay? This is not a permanent sign that you have placed here. So I don't know how you will take this information forth, but I really do feel, as a low-income resident in the city of Evanston, that you could not care less about my well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Next up, Dave Davis, Janod Rizki, and then Doreen Price.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, Clerk Reed, City Manager Wally Bobkowitz. My name is Dave Davis, and I am the Executive Director for Neighborhood and Community Relations at Northwestern University. And although I am new to this position, I am not new to the city of Evanston. During my time here in Evanston in many different capacities, I have enjoyed a positive and constructive working relationship with the city, and I am confident that that will continue in this new role. And I just wanted to speak briefly to the Lincoln Street Beach. Although the issue around accretion is very complicated, I just want to declare that the university has invested to modify and beautify the beach, and that we will continue to maintain the beach, and that we welcome our Evanston residents to use the beach. And lastly, I would be remiss if I just didn't say briefly the profound impact that Mayor Lorraine Morton had on my life, and that she was a giant in this community and our legacy will live on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dave, and welcome to your new job. Janod Rizki, Doreen Price, then Betty Esther.
I was saddened to hear of the former Mayor Morton's passing. City government here, while far from perfect in their tenure, was not the total screwed-up mess we face today, faced with huge property tax increases. Mayor Morton would not have let Harley-Clark continue for years. She would have found a reasonable solution that would have satisfied the majority of citizens in this town. The real difference between her and those that followed, that she had class, when something at this council came up and was voted on, she didn't go behind the scenes, she didn't manipulate things or do things like that and then achieve what she wanted. It was over. She had integrity. Today, we have individuals with no integrity, little class, who support really what I call incompetent work, corrupt and unacceptable performance of senior city staff. I am certain Mayor Morton would have replaced Mr. Bob Kowits by now for his lack of performance and leadership that's been self-serving. I strongly believe Lorraine was concerned for citizens of Evanston and the people here in the city. Lorraine would have saw through Mr. Bob Kowits' manipulations and schemes. She would have not let him stop hiring police officers and firefighters. She would have understood the serious consequences there, maybe given him a good kick in the rear and out the door. While Lorraine and I had differences, I think we had mutual respect. After she left, I heard she spoke highly of me, and I respect her. I was told several times she was very disturbed about what was going on here at this civic center. Soon the truth is coming out here, and it will come out, what a mess this place is in. And it's very serious, because it's not the 7.5 million Mr. Bob Kowits now revealed, before it was 3, and it's going up, and it will go to 30% to 50% property tax increase. How you manipulate that, how you pretend it isn't there, what happens, doesn't really matter. It's there. And I believe things will change here, and those responsible are going to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Doreen Price, Betty Esther, then Beth Adler.
I'm concerned with regard to the increased costs as a resident here, also with regard to the middle class, which is rarely acknowledged in any discussion in terms of people in affordable housing or people with regard to having needs that may not be addressed. This emphasis on the budget completely ignores the fact that we have people that have yet to be identified who need help. And I would see, I would like to see more active engagement and some creative thought given in terms of fact, what this person just represented, is that adjudication fees or anything in terms of justice that's actually money revenue generating, I think, is kind of a conflict of interest. We should not be monitored or encouraged to be good citizens on the basis of how much it would cost, or how much money the community gets when they catch somebody. It should be a case of, you know, judgment, and if it's an older person and they were just doing okay and they caught them, give them a break, okay? Or anybody else that looks like that they could use a break. But this thing where there's some sort of thing where you get justice, you don't. And I've been through these things where you can go to Cook County and I ended up paying $400. That was huge. And I got miscarriage of justice if I had a lawyer, because things were handled in such a poor way, for just 11 miles over, and the judge had to go back three years to find anything that was close to anything. I didn't have any tickets, so he had to go back three years. I think that's overreaching to call somebody a speeder. So there's a lot of injustice that occurs at Cook County courts, and I think that having right now a consideration that when we're looking for new law enforcement, that we also consider our internal judging system, and that we should have a judge that's part of Evanston, and not a rent-a-judge that comes in and has no relationship to the community. Because what you're extending to children is awesome and great, but the rest of us could use a little kindness too. So thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Betty Esther, then Beth Adler, then Carl Klein's the last speaker.
Hello. I want to speak on SP2, the budget. We, I attended the budget meeting, telecast, whatever, on the 13th, and they had the chart up there, they gave numbers and everything, and then they came to a figure, oh, this is what we kind of don't have. And then they kept talking, and then when it got down to the bottom, it was $7 million something, because $1 million was connected to Robert Crown, and that I didn't understand. And so you had to write your question on a card, and you only have a short time. So how long does it take for you to try to formulate a question to tell? Tell me how you think in a budget for next year, and you're talking about a project that you're just starting this year, that you voted... that you're just starting this year, that you voted for a bond, to have bonds for 50 million and plus. And then now it is you overdrawn $100 million. And then I saw A5 in tonight's agenda, and it's about the sidewalk, the 50/50 program. And it has where they have one change order, and that change order is $10,085. So, then that increased the amount that they gave, but they didn't give what the amount was for the first change order. And then it tells me that the money for this here change order, not the two-change order, is going to come from another fund, which was for the bus stop pilot program on Dodge Avenue. So, then that means you are borrowing from this part to take care of this here project over here, that has nothing to do with the bus stop, when you're talking about the 50/50 program. And then I'm saying, okay, need to go back to see where the money was switched from this column to that column to line up to you to be at $7 million. So, you keep it all in one column, and then we might can follow you. But when you're transferring funds from... This fund here was allocated for the Dodge program. This amount of fund, which was $211,000, which came together from a bond that was done in April of this year, plus what people put in, the community who says, I want my sidewalk fixed, so I'll put in my half. But then you have two other things that you put in, and you don't have the money, so you're taking it from the Dodge. So, will the Dodge program be another deficit that we're going to have to carry into 2019? So, kind of explain, have an answer for that when we have our next budget meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Beth Adler, and then Carl Klein.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of the City Council. I am Beth Adler, speaking on behalf of the Evanston Arts Council. With difficult budgeting decisions coming up, we want you to know how much your arts funding has done for the people of Evanston. Here's a list of some of our accomplishments from the last two years. 11 mural projects, four leased sculptures placed in parks around the city, one major sculpture by an internationally-known artist at the Emerson-Green Bay intersection, music and dance performances at city festivals, grants to over 30 organizations, and more than a dozen individual artists. With input from Alderman, we are working on placing public art in every ward. We helped fund Melissa Blunt's Witness quilt project, which gathered over 200 citizens stitching quilts to honor victims of domestic violence. We helped identity dance group bring dance instruction to Family Focus students. We helped Winter Hearth engage community families in group projects. We helped the Terrain Biennial work with Evanston artists to create pop-up outdoor art installations in front yards around the city. We funded Art Evolution's powerful theater program in partnership with Mudlark Theater, which engaged Evanston students in an original production exploring issues of racism. Many of our projects are funded in collaboration with community partners, including the Main Dempster Mile, the Central Street Business Association, the Girl Scouts of America, Family Focus, the Ridgefield Park Foundation, the Evanston Arts Center, and Northwestern University's Block Museum. Other Evanston organizations that have received our funding include the Actors Gymnasium, the Evanston Symphony Orchestra, the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian, Muse of Fire, the Music Institute of Chicago, Bela Voce, Evanston Made, Evanston in-School Music Association, the Evanston Dance Ensemble, the Open Studio Project, Kurtz Cafe, the Piven Theater Workshop, Perspective Gallery, Literature for All of Us, Shoot Middle School, and more. And we hope you'll consider this when you're making budget decisions in the next month. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Beth, for your service and coming out tonight. Last speaker is Carl Klein.
Good evening. I want to read this into the record. Evanston lost a wonderful woman, Lorraine H. Morton. For over 50 years, Morton was passionate public servant in Evanston. I swear she has a steel-trapped memory. She always remembered you and the last time you talked and the subject of the conversation. One of my favorite memories of her was when I was eight years old. Mayor Morton spotted me at the edge of a large crowd just as she arrived. Slowly, she worked her way over to me, greeting everyone with her megawatt smile and zest for life. "Hello, young sir," she jovially said to me. As an educator, she knew how to engage with children. She wanted to know if I understood the importance of the event. I quickly told her that I was excited that the Gross Point Lighthouse was being designated a national historic landmark. During the dedication ceremony, Mayor Morton told everyone assembled the importance of preserving historic buildings. In her speech, she referenced me and my interest in architecture and history, when she said that it is important for everyone, especially the younger generation, to understand the heritage of our community and be stewards of it. Fast forward 20 years. At a planned commission meeting, Mayor Morton ended up sitting next to me. We attentively watched the meeting unfold. Occasionally, she would make a wise remark under her breath about what was going on. After the meeting, she told me somehow she couldn't keep herself away from what was going on and happening at the civic center. She went on to say that being present in person was an exception. Normally, she watches the meetings on TV. Mayor Morton always genuinely wanted to know how you were doing and what you were up to. I told her I was now a preservationist. This prompted her to remind me that while she was a principal of Haven, she helped restore the building. After she talked to dozens of people who wanted to say hello, I helped walk her out to her daughter's car. While we were walking outside, she stopped and looked at me. After a few moments of silent reflection, she remembered our conversation we had 20 years ago, standing in front of the Gross Point Lighthouse. She then asked me if I would make sure that Evanston's historic buildings were preserved. With a twinkle in her eye, she hugged me. We said our goodbyes and parted ways. This was the last time I talked to her. It is amazing how one of the first and last conversations I had with her related to preservation. Now, in Lorraine Morton's honor, I will continue to fight to preserve Evanston's cultural heritage, built and natural. There's a lot more to do in the city to preserve our heritage and make sure that the story of all Evanstonians is told and preserved. And I hope all nine of you, Alderman, Mayor, and City Manager, will join me in that fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. That was a nice ending to our public comment this evening. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out and sharing your perspective. We're now going to move on to one item of Special Order of Business, which is SP1, which is the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget update. So, City Manager, could you take us through this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're in the final stages of preparing the budget. As has been mentioned, we had, I think, a really good multi-site presentation of sort of budget issues last week, thanks to those who you were able to host various sites around the community. The current plan is to have the budget out on Friday, October 5. There'll be presentations of the budget on the 15th and 22nd. The public hearing on the budget, please make sure it's on your calendars for Saturday, October 27, at, I think, either 8:30 or 9:00 a.m. We'll finalize that time. We'll go the balance of the morning, as it has been in past years, looking for adoption prior to Thanksgiving. So, that moves forward. We had hoped to give you two presentations this evening regarding some of the work that we're doing. The first is a presentation from Kimberly Richardson, the Deputy City Manager. She has been tasked to do a review of the various social service programs that we offer, so she's here to give that report. And Erica Storley and Jill Vellin, our Assistant City Manager and Parking Manager, are also here to give an overview of some of the work we've been doing with parking fees and charges, which we also hope to have included in the budget. So, unless, Mr. Mayor, there are any preliminary questions, we'll go right to Ms. Richardson. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, and members of the City Council. Again, Kimberly Richardson, Deputy City Manager. And being mindful of the time, I will try to get through this presentation pretty quickly. Just so you are aware, again, the City Manager directed staff to conduct a comprehensive review of social services to identify some opportunities to implement performance management based on needs and outcomes, and to improve service delivery systems and funding allocation. With that being said, given that the timing of the budget process, there were challenges in that inconsistent collection of data to provide outcome-based evaluation, to build the capacity to evaluate all of our services, was a little bit more intensive than staff expected. And so, we spent this part of the process really just trying to get an understanding inventory of our programs. And then looking at how, finding how service delivery is being implemented, how people are finding out about the services, where they need, and then also how our core social services are spread over several departments. And so, with these challenges, we looked at what are social services? And the City Manager mentioned at the budget presentation last week that we have over 200 programs. And that is true, we have over 200 programs. However, when you look at the core social service programs, we have about 61 of those programs. And these are covering food, housing, safety, among our adults, including self-sufficiency by education and employment assistance, and help to youth to overcome barriers of success and develop the skills necessary to become productive citizens. And so, with that, as you see a breakdown of our core services, we have about 61, like I said, 61 programs, and they are covered mostly under Parks and Rec, Community Services, and Health and Human Services. We do have a few programs in the library, and one program, CMO, which is our Local Employment Program. And so, with that being said, we looked at how much are we funding for social services? And with the FY '18 budget, we fund over $3.2 million in FY '18 for social services, which is approximately 1 percent of a $335 million budget, which includes all funds. And if you can see from the chart, which is a little difficult, the general fund just alone is 35 percent of the budget. So, 1 percent of our social services is how we're funding our programs. And now, mostly, that comes from General Assistance Fund, and also federal funding, and a little bit from the general fund. So, what are the programs we're servicing? So, Senior Services, for instance. We have a number of programs and services. 21 of those programs are covering Evanston Benefit Card, the Embusment Program, Benefit Access Assistance, the Handyman Program, Senior Bridge Housing Program, and so forth. And the program cost, as you see, is around $372,000 of program costs. So, that does not include personnel. If you include personnel, that would be an additional $172,000. And most of these programs that's being serviced under Senior Services, really are health care programs, are gaps that are not being provided for seniors that are being provided at the Levy Center. Youth and Young Adults and Young Advocate, even though they're two separate programs, have approximately seven programs coming out of them. Now, this number for program cost is a large number of $800,000, but of that, $560,000 goes towards the Summer Youth Employment Program. And that's including the cost of funding just the beginning of the program, as well as funding the young members who are participants of the program that are coming from the city. And then additional programs that are done through Youth and Young Adults include community mobilization, opportunity provisions, social intervention, suppression. So, as we're seeing these programs, what my goal is, is to delve a little bit deeper into finding out more about what these programs are and who they're supporting, as well as wanting to learn more about how are they reaching the community, who are they reaching the community, and if they're creating the impact that they're supposed to in the community. Again, this is another instance for General Assistance with the program budget, as well as the personnel costs. Again, they're supporting five programs. This is significant funding for this program from the GA levy. And as you can see, it's not just providing financial assistance, but adult basic education, job club, clothing assistance for those who need it, to be able to get into interviews, for them to be able to prepare themselves, and then personnel essential closet. And then, we also have another area that's very important, is our Emergency Assistance Program, as well as a Human Services Program. Now, there are 14 programs, and if you look at the cost, you might say, well, that doesn't make any sense. The cost mostly for Emergency Assistance Program and Human Services Programs are really the personnel costs. What you see from the program cost is for the Emergency Hotel voucher program and the Emergency Assistance Program. And as you can see from FY '17, $4,832 were distributed for those two programs. And just year-to-date, in FY '18, we're at $14,000. So, you see there's a need, and it continues to increase. Lastly, just to bring this into discussion as well, even though we are not administering CDBG or mental health funding, we are providers of those funds. And so, this is where our budget has been for the last couple of years, for mental health and CDBG, and these are the organizations for which we're funding. And as you can tell, most of these funders are multiple-year funders, the organizations that we have funded, even though they have to apply annually each year for different programs, or for the same program, they have to justify their funding. So, what are the next steps? Well, I know this is part of a budget discussion, and unfortunately, I don't have a conclusion yet to where we're at with our social services. And so, what I am looking to do is continue to develop, working with external partners to develop a measurement tool to evaluate service delivery of programs and services. This would be useful, as included in the request from the City Manager, was to provide equity lens as part of this process. And in order to do an equity assessment and any additional service delivery assessments, we need to be able to collect data. We have Apricot, which is our case management system, where we have begun collecting some data, but it's not consistent across all programs. So, we have to figure out a way how to implement other programs to utilize Apricot in order for us to be able to collect the data consistently. And then also, something that we are missing, again, being that we have programs housed across multiple departments, is looking at what happens if we reorganize and put all under one department? Is that a better way of utilizing resources, of allocating resources, of minimizing duplications? And that's something that we would like to investigate, but in order to do that, I think the first thing that needs to happen is to create a social service framework that includes outcome measurements, so that we're able to use that as a guideline to how we want to then implement a reorganization of our social services that would be then introduced for the 2020 budget. At this time, are there any questions?
Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I have a few questions. If you go back to the General Assistance slide, please. You mentioned in there, but I didn't say it in the slide, that those funds, if I remember correctly, come from a tax levy?
Correct. The GA levy.
Okay. So, do all of those funds come from the GA levy, or just some of them?
Well, all those funds come from the GA. So, you have the GA, and then, of course, some personnel costs will not be a part of the GA, that some of those personnel costs are coming from the General Fund as well.
Okay. But so, in that number, even though it's its own separate tax levy, you have it included in your pie chart as the overall funding?
Yes.
Okay. And then, just maybe to clarify for the record, you mentioned with Mental Health Board and CDBG?
Yes.
And the Mental Health Board, if I'm correct, is not a tax levy, it's just an allocation we make out of the general fund, correct?
So, yes. And for the record, so, Mental Health Board has the Human Services Fund, which is money that is coming from the general fund, but it's under the Human Services Fund.
Okay. But it's not its own levy?
Correct.
And then, the CDBG is federal funding?
Federal funding. Correct.
Okay. All right, and so, just wanted to clarify that. So, yeah, I was looking forward to hearing this presentation, as I've talked to the City Manager several times, just about kind of this, the social service programs we do provide here at the city, and that I think that they're very much needed and we want to protect them. But I, I also would like to see us have some more data to see if we really are reaching the population, if we really are kind of meeting the gaps that are, that are in the community, particularly as we talk about different nonprofits closing down with the Illinois Budget, that I want to make sure we're using tax dollars to meet needs that are unmet in our community through other agencies. But I am concerned that, from what I have learned, the data measurement is not used across the board. I know the General Assistance, they have their own kind of, I believe from the township, you know, database they were using there that they collect and so on and so forth. So I would love to see more efforts put into, whether it's Apricot or whatever system we're using, to make sure those numbers are there for, for us to accurately assess how we're serving the population, because I think we probably all get different calls for different needs, and I refer people as I best know how, but I don't know always what happens to them. And then for your last point, is I would love to see us consolidate these different service units in one place. I'm always concerned when I come in, and if I go to Parks and Rec and I see young men who are maybe there waiting for outreach workers, you have to sit there, you have to go behind this glass, you know, it's, it's a little bit formal when you go down to GA, you have a different experience. And being that City Hall is designed the way it is, sometimes there's not someone at the front desk to even welcome you. And so I always want to make sure this is a very inviting space. And so if we could kind of, I would definitely support some kind of consolidation. That also is going to hopefully allow us to maximize our funding and our staff ability and not have so much duplication if we have it now. So I would look forward to the second part of your presentation, and I would encourage the City Manager to make sure that, that all staff, providing some kind of social service, like providing social services, we are tracking those numbers and tracking the outcome so that we can make sure we're using our money wisely.
And may I speak to that, Alderman Fleming? One thing that, as we are beginning to put this evaluation tool, create the evaluation tool, and then also be able to implement it, one thing that I can do is maybe Human Services Committee is the appropriate place to go, is give an update to the Human Services Committee on where we're at in the process, so that if there's any questions or input early on in the process, you can provide that with the tool we're using and, and how we're utilizing that tool to ensure that we're capturing the data that you're looking for.
I think that would be great. And then the last point that I forgot about was the part about using an equity lens. So obviously, I definitely support that. But as I said in our previous equity conversation, you really can't do that without having accurate data, because other than that, you're kind of making some assumptions as to who we're serving and, you know, if we're serving people equitable, if we're serving the people who are not being served elsewhere. So I think I want us to use an equity lens, but I want us to use it with the correct measurements in place. And I don't know, given our lack of data at this point, how you can apply an equity lens without knowing the numbers.
You're correct. And so what we will do is to try to incorporate questions within that tool to be able to ensure to capture the equity, equity lens concerns or questions that would be important for their data collection. Because there are questions that are pertaining to equity that may not be a social service or service delivery question that we can make sure we're implementing into the tool.
All right. I don't see any other questions for the Deputy City Manager.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, maybe just to, to put a little closure on this. So our, our plan is, certainly there are going to be recommended reductions in some of these areas. And so we're going to ask the council to consider those as part of the 2018 budget process. Once I think we have a sense of, of what size those services are for '19 moving forward, then I think is when the crux of Ms. Richardson's work will begin. And we really see it as a 12-month process leading up to the 2020 budget. So I think Ms. Richardson is absolutely correct. I think we will use the Human Services Committee, starting at the beginning of the year, to talk about that process. I think we'll certainly want feedback from the community, feedback from the employees involved. If we're going to be consolidating operations, we want to be as mindful about that process as possible. So we will not, this is a multi-year process, and I think really the point of the presentation tonight was really to signal to you that this is not something we're going to come with the proposed budget and have a complete solution for. But there will be recommended reductions in some of these areas for the council to consider, and then we'll move forward in '19, considering to gather data, be more thoughtful as we look at further consolidation. Mr. Mayor, the second item is regarding parking. Delaun, the Parking Manager, Castrol, the Assistant City Manager, are here. As we have looked at the budget, as we've talked to the council about the budget over the last several months, the party-based budgeting process, many components of the city's parking system have come up for discussion. We wanted to take a brief opportunity this evening to talk a little bit about some of the thoughts, to share some data that we have collected. We're not making any specific recommendations tonight, but I think what we wanted to do is to give sort of a broader overview of what our thinking was, get at least some feedback from you if we're on the right track or not, if there's anything you're hearing that doesn't make sense, and, and we'll make those adjustments accordingly. I see Ms. Bellin at the podium, so I imagine she's starting up first. Good evening.
Yes, thank you. Manager Bobkowitz, Mayor Hagerty, members of the City Council, it's good to see you this evening. So I'm going to walk through answering some questions that have been brought off with the council in the past, and some of the, excuse me, some of the proposals that are going to be made for the budget. So we'll just start here. So one of the questions we've gotten in the past is just an understanding about what comes from the Parking Fund, what comes from the General Fund. So just wanted to take a moment to make sure that we clarify that. And just note, from the slide, the Parking Fund includes revenues from garage receipts, that's hourly, and permits, meter collections, surface lot permits, and then the expenses that come out of the Parking Fund are then correlated with those revenues, garage management, lot resurfacing maintenance, and then we also do transfers to the, to the General Fund. So for the General Fund, this is actually where the parking citation money goes into and where parking enforcement is paid out of. So I just wanted to take a moment, because sometimes it's confusing, I do get questions from the public and, and elsewhere about those items. So first, I'm going to just start briefly with the General Fund and the Parking Enforcement Officers. We've had some questions about how many officers we have. So currently, we have 10 FTEs, nine full-time, and two part-time PEOs that are out on the street. We have coverage, 24-hour coverage from Sunday at 11:00 PM until midnight Saturday. This is, the coverage consists of six PEOs on the day shift, two on the evening shift, and then one PEO overnight. With the part-timers, we do, do some basic coverage on Sundays related to our, we have a minimum level of restricted parking areas that happen on Sunday. So currently, we do about four hours of coverage on the Sunday. I did wanted to make a note that 25% of the PEO's work time right now is used for the crossing guard coverage and traffic control, for instance, is related to police and fire. As we've reported before, and something that the council wanted us to move forward on, we are finishing up an RFP for the crossing guard services, and that's, that will be released at the end of this month. And we anticipate bringing that back for a possible changeover to use an outside company to help us staff our crossing guards sometime in, for, for a changeover in January. But that'll be coming back to the council over the next couple of months for discussion. Another question that's been asked is related to our revenues versus expenditures for our parking citations. So this is, map over the years. I, I just wanted to point out that it is not the intent to try to balance the budget for citations. The reason that we do, we collect revenues is more of a compliance, the goal is really compliance to ensure that we have available parking in all areas in the city.
Jill, we have a question up here.
Okay.
Do you mind going back once? I'm just curious to know which, this is the first time that I've heard about the idea of the crossing guards being outsourced. I'm just curious to know, did that come out of a committee, or was that out of the recommendation? Where did that idea come from?
We, we brought that forward, the July 31st meeting for the council, we were going through the budget and received feedback that it was something that the council was interested in. So that's, I got that direction to.
And I think, let me, let me make sure to clarify that.
Clarify the we, right.
That, that we are going to look at this as an option for the budget. And if the council wishes to pursue it, then we will have an RFP in place to be able to act upon it. We believe there's a $200,000 a year savings to contract out the crossing guards. We believe that we can provide employment for all the existing crossing guards, and will allow us to better use the Parking Enforcement Officers. So there's been no final decision made by the City Council. We have discussed it, I think, in passing perhaps, more than anything more specifically, but no decision would be made until the council considers it as part of the budget process.
We had one other question or comment. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, it's this same slide, that 25% of PEO work time is used for crossing guards. I have had this concern, because I, you know, frequently crossing guards don't show up, you know, or they're sick or what have you. And I do see, you know, sometimes the PEO out there. I guess my question may be more for the City Manager is, are our, are our police officers able to do that? I know that our PEOs, when they're working as crossing guards, are not out doing traffic and, or parking enforcement, and the crossing guard shift is relatively short, and we have officers on duty. So my, my thought has always been, instead of having PEOs not, you know, doing citations and such, could we have a police officer who just covers that time?
Alderman Fleming, members of the council, generally, the answer is no. The, the traffic officers are usually the, the next line of defense in this, and their plate of requested actions is, as far exceeds the allotted staff time. So we have been reluctant to use police officers in place of crossing guards. Certainly, the resource is a valuable one, and so we look at alternatives. And so the PEOs are a better alternative than a police officer. I think what we would propose is to have neither. And if we're able to contract out the service, I think it will help with reliability, because they are a difficult position sometimes to fill, while some are longstanding, others, it's a very transient type of work. And so I think, again, as part of the budget process, we want to, to get some direction from the council.
Okay, so one more follow-up question. Why would it need to be a traffic officer versus just a patrol officer who crosses?
Because the way the police department is structured, the, the beat cops have, again, very specific responsibilities. The traffic officers, their days are usually designed around special assignments, and so it is easier to redirect the resource of a traffic officer than it is a beat cop. And again, regardless, we would not, it, it always would be the lowest priority to use a police officer. We would always use a Parking Enforcement Officer, and that is why in some cases, several of the assigned Parking Enforcement Officers on any given day are filling in for, for crossing guards. So it's an issue that's been longstanding. We would like to try to have the council focus on it as part of the budget process and, and hopefully come up with, with some solutions moving forward.
Alderman, right.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't know if this supports Alderman Fleming, but I am very curious to that same thought process if, and I don't, I don't have a timeframe, but I think the, if I was to use the example, maybe a half an hour before kids go to school and a half an hour after school is, I think, the ideal time that the kids need that traffic support. And I'm, I'm also a little bit confused why we wouldn't utilize police officers during that time that are already out in the field. I think there's an understanding that, obviously, if there's a calls for service, that that support, you know, they take care of that emergency. But during that 30-minute time, I think that would be something worth exploring, from my perspective, for whatever it's worth, as part of the budget discussions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So moving on, we also have had a question recently about parking meter revenues. So this is the, from 2013 to 2017, actuals for parking meter revenues. I want to make a note about the decrease in 2017 as it relates to the next slide. This decrease is attributable to diminishing reliability on the on-street meters. We've, the meters are starting to go dead often. We have the first generation of the smart meters, and so the technology is several years old now. It relies heavily on battery, rechargeable batteries. The battery, similar to your cell phone, after a few years, it doesn't hold a charge as long, so they're expensive to replace. They need to be replaced often. It takes a lot of staff time and maintenance to maintain the meters, so it's a constant battle. We are now starting to experience something that was, we're calling kind of screen fizzle, where we're, we're going to be in a situation where we're going to have to send these meters out, that we won't be able to maintenance them ourselves. So that's, that's what you can attribute that number to, and the concern going forward is that's going to continue to happen as these continue to age.
Jill, so we haven't brought enough sort of new technology or new, new boxes online? I mean, I know downtown, we've got certain blocks where, you know, a little more people are using the app and everything else, but you're telling me like the meters, these old meters that are breaking down are so extensive throughout the city that the new stuff's not really making a dent in this?
Yes, we're not, because the majority of our boxes are in the lots, where we still see high, good revenue, because the boxes have a very low downtime, if, if at any. The meters, we still have 1,635-ish or so meters on the street. So that's, that's a significant part of our, our revenue for on-street, is a single-space meters. So the next slide is something that we're going to be bringing to council October 8th, so that, to your point, Mayor. We're looking at proposing the replacement of approximately 1,000 meters with pay boxes on-street. As you pointed out, we do have a pilot program that we started last November on the 1,500 and 1,700 blocks of Sherwin Avenue. This has been very successful, and we've seen a high adoption of the Park Evanston app related to that. One, a couple other things I wanted to point out about the pay-by-plate machines. They have a 99% uptime versus our current condition, where any given day, we have 30 or 40 meters that the battery is going dead and we're, we're chasing them around town. So I just wanted to show you a quick slide, that this has been the increase in usage for the mobile, for the mobile app since we instituted the Park Evanston and those pay boxes at the same time last November. We've almost doubled our, our usage from last year, and it looks like we're going to continue that trend. And for those boxes on the street, it is 30% increase in revenue for those streets, because the boxes just aren't down as much as, we replaced a little over 110 meters with those boxes for those two blocks. So that, this brings me to the next thing that we want to talk about tonight, and that is the concept of demand-based pricing, and that's related to the revenue that we're going to be proposing for the 2019 budget. So this is a slide I like to show that really shows the parking, the parking dilemma that most places face. You, you know, you can try several different options. You, you know, you can try several different options, but if you have free and convenient parking, it's usually never available. And if you have free and available parking, it's typically not convenient. And then if you have convenient and available parking, it doesn't, it doesn't equal free. So those are the type of things that you have to consider. So that's why we want to introduce something called a demand-based pricing strategy. It's, one of the things, one of the goals you want to work towards with the demand-based pricing strategy is to have about 80 to 85% occupancy on your streets. This allows you to have, you know, 15% open spaces, which helps reinforce the, the reality and perception that you do have parking available, which is something that we have plenty of in downtown Evanston. It's just that the most convenient parking right now is filled up all of the time based on the way that we do our parking structure. I just want to point out before I show you the other things that we're presenting, that this strategy doesn't work on its own. Like it's, if you pick one item, it doesn't necessarily have the same effect as if you don't do another item. So the next couple of slides I'm going to show you, they need to work in concert with each other in order to have the desired effect of having available parking and also the revenues that I'm projecting that are attached with it. So the first item I want to bring up to you is the elimination of free parking at meters on Sundays. This is something that we talked, we've talked about before, brought up through the budget and staff's still proposing it. With the elimination of parking meters, or elimination of free parking meters, we believe there'll be about an increase of $575,000 to the annual revenue. With this option of having the parking, having to pay for the parking meters, we also provide an alternative parking option that the garages would remain free on Sunday. So this is part of the overall strategy to keep the most convenient parking options free, your highest, your most convenient, the highest price and providing more availability. Just note that the cost, there is revenue cost. We aren't, we aren't collecting that revenue now, but if we were, that's what we would project, that if we didn't have the, the garages free on Sunday.
Jill, we have a question up here. Alderman Sufferden?
Would you need additional parking enforcement officers if they were working on Sundays?
Yes. Based on the way that we do the shifts, we would do, we would, we would do some shift changes potentially and we need 1.5 FTEs.
Okay. So the 575 doesn't account for that or does it, does the 575 include the presumption that you would have more staff?
Uh, no, that's the, that's the gross revenue projection. To have 1.5 FTEs, a loose estimate would be about $140,000. So this option is needed because spots need to be available for businesses who currently have little to no turnover on Sunday while many of our parking garages remain, you know, half-full during times when we don't have a very large event going on. And it gives the people, it gives the people an option to park for free and opens up the street parking. The next part of this would be an increase to the downtown meters. We've actually provided two, two options here for consideration. An option one would be an increase from a dollar an hour to a dollar 50 an hour. You have the corresponding revenues. This would equate to 50%, or 50 cents per 20 minutes. Option B would be going to a dollar an hour to $2 an hour. This is similar to the lowest pricing that they currently have in our neighbor, the neighbor city to the south of us. And that's the corresponding revenues. Again, an alternative parking option would be that we would recommend that we keep the first hour free in the garages. This is giving an alternate to people for a less amount. It's now charging the highest for the most convenient parking and giving people an option to go a little bit farther and get a lower amount.
We've got one, another question. Alderman Sufferden?
Sorry, Jill. Uh, with option B, could you, have you, did it simple as just doubling the 185,000 if we were to make, go to option B so it would be a high meter increase but make two hours of free parking at the garage or is it a more complicated calculation than that?
It's a little bit more complicated than that. I can certainly, I can figure out those numbers quickly though.
Based on what you're saying where it's like you want to have an expensive option for people who value convenience, but an affordable option for people who value affordability, would that be the right balance to increase the meters substantially but offer the garage as an alternative to people who would, whose complaint would be that there's no inexpensive place to park downtown?
Right, that, that's the, that's the strategy that we're, we're looking at. So we certainly can look at that option if that's something that the council wants us to.
And Alderman Sufferden, the members of the council, I mean, this is, this is, we're balancing multiple, multiple factors here. I don't know that there's any one right answer to any of this. I think the purpose this evening is to kind of just show out what some of the options would be. So we could certainly look at two hours free, you know, we've, you know, what, what a dollar 25 an hour versus $2 an hour. Some of this is a function, perhaps outdated function of coins. If people are going to use a credit card, use the app, then the increment can really be anything. But we wanted to sort of give you a flavor of things and get a little bit of feedback tonight. So as we're finalizing some budget numbers, we, we get a sense of what, what's worth pursuing and what's perhaps not worth pursuing.
And then the third thing we would want to look at is something that we've also discussed previously in budget talks, is that we would look at increasing the hourly parking garage rates with an annual automated adjustment built in. Again, doing this would have to be predicated on the fact that we're looking at the meters that are in proximity to the parking garages. So you're still keeping your garage rates lower than what your street rates are. So I will, I have a couple of, of tables after this, but basically what we're looking to do is to adjust the hourly rates by a maximum of $1 per year for the next five years and with kind of the flexibility about the usage that is happening in the garages. All three of the city-owned parking garages remain free on Sunday. And then just, we just wanted to point out that the daily rates have not been changed for 10 years. There used to be an auto increase in place prior to the recession, but it was made a decision that, that that would be discontinued during that time. So we're bringing, we're bringing it back.
Jill, on that first bullet, so increase the hourly parking rates with the annual, okay. That's just, I'm sorry.
So that's the number for 2019. We're projecting that we would increase revenue by 390,000 for 2019.
So you're, you're not suggesting, at least you haven't gotten to it yet, of increasing the, the monthly parkers who.
I haven't got to that slide yet.
Oh, okay.
All right. So just quickly, this is what the current parking rates are in downtown Evanston. We just picked a couple of garages and our garages. And we are the lowest rates comparative to the, those other private garages. There's a few more, but we just wanted to use those as an example. And then the next slide is what we will be proposing for 2019. Based on usage, we've looked at how people use the garage. So we wouldn't be proposing anything for the first three hours, giving people an option to go downtown, do some things. But as the day goes on, we would look to group the hours and have a rate that's, again, only $1 higher for the entire 24-hour day. And so based on my proposal, which I would bring back to you later date if this is something that you're interested in, we would look to have, you know, for 2020, the overall rate would be $15 for a day. And we would adjust the hours in between based on the usage and what's the highest demand timeframes. One other thing we want to bring up is that currently we're only charging 25 cents an hour at some of our commuter lots that are near the train stops that are outside of where the parking garages are. And at this point, I'd just like to, we're now, visual surveys that we've been doing is that those spaces are pretty much filled up by nine or 10:00 in the morning and they stay filled until the end, end of the day. Some of those areas, we really need to have some more parking available for the local businesses. And so we would recommend doubling, the minimum doubling that rate. That makes it a little bit higher than what someone could go to, say, the Maple Garage and get a monthly permit for. So again, paying for convenience if you, if you wanted to go, you know, to that particular train stop where this is going somewhere else.
We've got a couple of questions here. First Alderman Fleming and then Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, so this is interesting. So this is one reason why I suggested in our last transportation meeting that we actually do an entire parking study because you can, I mean, this is a huge difference from what you pay somewhere else and you're still assuming the parking for all day, just like you would if you go downtown and park in a lot. Anyway, so my question is, is this for all of the lots? So like, I know you only have a few mentioned here, but I'm thinking about, you know, is this like along all of the metro that it's 25 cents an hour or are you finding that just some of the lots haven't been updated for whatever reason?
So we, in some places, we, so we don't have this all the way up and down the line. You're, you're correct. I just gave a few lots, but that is for the entire, that's for all of the lots, that, that amount and that I think that we should raise it across the board.
So, okay, just, so help me, this is for all the lots that line the metro that we consider kind of the commuter lots?
Yes.
So the lot that if I go to the Great Harvest Bread Company on Central Street and there's a street lot, that lot reflects the pricing of like the downtown lots?
Um, there's, so in downtown, we don't have any commuter parking, parking, you have to go to the garages, but, so the other lots, so central area, yes, Main dumpster mile, the other locations where we have stops.
Okay, and so your proposal is this would, these prices would increase to match more reflect our regular parking around town?
Um.
Or you're not making that?
No, I mean, it would still be less than that. I think there, there is a tradition, certainly other communities up and down the North Shore have a lower hourly increment. So if we're at 50 cents an hour, that's still something less than we are charging anywhere else. And I think that is attributable to this, the longer-term use. And again, if the council wished to do something different, we certainly could do something different. We, we are just saying that we think that it, it's too small. You mentioned the lot by Great Harvest, that is not considered a commuter lot on Central Street, correct?
She.
Well, yeah, I didn't mention that, but I was just trying to figure out if this price is the price all along kind of the metro line. And yeah, so I, I mean, I for sure would support going past 25 cents an hour because I know, again, in my ward where people do park for the metro and then we have blocks where you have a lot of apartments and residents are circling and circling and circling. You know, we have residents who can't park, but then you have someone who could park all day and pay 25 cents an hour. I would definitely encourage us to increase that price to something more fair.
Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, thanks. Do we impose a city of Evanston tax on private parking garages?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
How, how much is that? Is that for?
Attached to you?
For space? For the private, the, so the 1890 Maple, 500 Davis, the Northwestern Parking Structures, all of these pay?
Yes, David. Good evening, Mayor and the members of the city council. There are, I think, and I can verify that, but I'm going back from my five, six years back memory, I think there are two rates of parking taxes, one for the hourly and one for the monthly parking. So, and we charge for all the garages the parking tax.
Okay, for, and I'm, and I'm just talking about the private garages, not the city-owned garages.
Right, private.
Right.
But Alderman Fisk, are you suggesting that staff take a look at that and see what that is and when the last time it is that's been increased?
If, if we're already charging a tax on that, that's good. I'd like to know what it is.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in, in the interest of time, I think we're, we're, I'd like to maybe just skip to the, the overall proposed parking changes slide. You have the presentation online in your packet. I, I think as we've, we've covered much of this, I think staff's message is loud and clear that we need to look at demand pricing the best as possible. We've not talked a lot about the surface parking lots. I think we would also look and propose similar types of changes for that. Alderman Sufferden and I had an interesting conversation today about surface parking lots, about really focusing on the demand and some of those surface parking lots have a very high demand. Should we not perhaps create schemes that at least in part allow for the highest bidder? And if the market will demand a, a fee that's much more in some lots than others, is that something we should, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Alderman Sufferden, but...
I wouldn't say scheme.
Scheme, scheme is a British term. Where it's a clean word in British English.
Yeah, if you have a surface lot with 45 parking spaces that is generating $720 annually per space now, what, how do we figure out in the absence of the citywide parking study what the market will bear? And is an auction the best way to do it?
And so I think we would certainly want to look at that as well. We're concerned about the capital needs of the parking enterprise. As Jill has mentioned, we are continuing to invest money in, in equipment, certainly the decks need tending to as well. So we will continue to recommend any adjustments. A portion go to the general fund and a portion go to the parking fund. So again, our purpose tonight was to give you a flavor of things. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if there's any additional feedback tonight or over the next couple of weeks, certainly Jill and Erica and I would be, would be happy to hear that. The, the budget deficit is, is certainly something that is manageable, but is going to require adjustments. And one of those adjustments are going to be to find revenue adjustments that make sense and we think that the parking operation is one of those. So we'll keep you posted. Again, Jill, thank you for the very complete information. Erica, thank you as well for putting that all together. It's 10 to 11 and we need to get to the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill, and thank you everybody for your work on, on that analysis. All right, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Alderman Fleming, if you wouldn't mind taking us through M1 and then APW.
All right. Consent agenda, M1, approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting from July 23rd, 2018, which have been amended in August 13th, 2018. Public, excuse me, Administration and Public Works Committee tonight approved the following. A1 payroll, July 23rd through August 5th, amount of $3,195,397. Payroll, August 6th through August 19th, 2018, $3,94,412.31. And payroll, August 20th, 2018 through September 9th, $2,872,580.11. The bills list dated September 11th, 2018, $9,757,054.09. A3 contract with Thieland Materials LLC for the 2018 leaf hauling disposable system. This is in the amount of, not to exceed $40,000, the staff's recommending executing a contract with Thieland Materials. And this comes from the Street Maintenance Residential Debris Removal Cost Fund. A3 is off of the, excuse me, A4 is off the consent agenda. A5 is change order number two to the contract for the 2018 50/50 sidewalk replacement project with Schroeder &amp; Schroder. Staff's recommending we authorize city manager to execute this change order with Schroeder &amp; Schroder. This is in the amount of $50,000 for the Dodge Avenue Bus Pilot Program. A6 is the one-year contract extension for purchase of Rock Salt from Morton Salt Company. Staff is recommending city council approve city manager to execute this contract. This is in the amount of $481,000 and... This is in the amount of $481,000 and, $481,575. A9 is, excuse me, A7 is the emergency single-source agreement with Jonathan, Johnson Controls for the replacement of fire panel devices at the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center. Staff's recommending we authorize city manager to execute this contract in the amount of $108,497. Funding is from CIP 2018 General Obligation Bonds. A8 is Sidewalk Cafe at Tax Cafe. This is a Sidewalk Cafe application for Tax Cafe, a type-two restaurant at 2012 Central Street. It will operate from 6:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. A9, sole surface purchase of Cisco SmartNet software from CDW in the amount of $47,509.25. This is out of the IT Division's Computer Licensing and Support Fund. A10 is a contract with Target Solutions for a learning management software system. This is, oh, so, funding will come out of four different accounts, and this is for action. A11 is off of...
What did you think?
A11 is off consent agenda. A12, 36-month contract extension.
Would you also take that off?
Okay, it's off. Is A13 also off?
I'm sorry, 13.
13 off as well?
Yeah.
All right, 13 is off. A14, Resolution 64-R-18, authorizing a lease renewal agreement with Impact Behavioral Health Partners for office space at the Civic Center. This will be in the amount of three, they will pay $3,362 per month for 24-month lease here at the Civic Center. A15 is Resolution 64-R-18, amending agreement with Hoffman House Catering for senior meal food programs. This contract is valued at $43,543. A16 is Resolution 59-R-18, approving intergovernmental agreement for use of the Village of Wonaka Fire Training Tower. There's no cost there. A17 is Resolution 70-R-18, grant application for state funding through the Open Spaceland Acquisition and Development Grant Program for the Harvard Park Renovation Project. There are several different funding sources, including the Neighbor Fund, the Neighborhood Improvement Reserve Fund, and the General Obligation Bonds. A18, Resolution 66-R-18, Eastman Agreement with Northwestern University for replacement of underground water storage reservoir at Lincoln Street and Campus Drive. A19 is ordinance, A19 is ordinance 98-O-18, amending city code section 2-6, two, sorry, 7-2-6D, Sidewalk Cafes, allowing Class K liquor license Sidewalk Cafes. Ordinance, A12, A20 is ordinance 85-O-18, decreasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for BAT 17 located at 1709 Benson Avenue. This would decrease the Class C liquor license from 24 to 23. A21 is ordinance 86-O-18, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Torino 3634 LLC, doing business as BAT 17 located at 1709 Benson. This will be increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses from 23 to 24. A22, ordinance 87-O-18, decreasing the number of Class R liquor licenses for Sedexo America LLC, doing business as Northwestern University North Center located at 1999 Campus Drive. This will decrease the number of Class R liquor licenses from three to two. A23 is ordinance 88-O-18, increasing the number of Class R liquor licenses for Compass Group USA Incorporated, doing business as Cartwells Northwestern University North Center located at 1999 Campus Drive. This will increase the number of Class R liquor licenses from two to three. A24, ordinance 89-O-18, decreasing the number of Class T liquor licenses for Sedexo America LLC, doing business as Sedexo America located at 1501 Central Street. This will decrease the number of Class T liquor licenses from three to two. A25, ordinance 90-O-18, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Compass Group USA Incorporated, DBA, Cartwells located at 1999 Campus Drive. This will increase the number of Class T liquor licenses from two to three. A26 is the ordinance 91-O-18, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Levy Premium Food Service Limited Partnership, doing business as Levy at Ryan Fieldhouse and Walter Athletics Center located at 2255 Campus Drive. This will increase the number of Class C liquor licenses from three to four. A27, ordinance 95-O-18, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Union Square Evanston located at 1307 Chicago Avenue. This will increase the number of Class C liquor licenses from 50 to 51. A28 is ordinance 96-O-18, decreasing the number of Class A liquor licenses for Union Square Evanston located at 1307 Chicago Avenue. This will decrease the number of Class A liquor licenses from one to zero. A29 is ordinance 97-O-18, increasing the number of Class T liquor licenses for L3 Evanston LLC, doing business as Next of Kinship located at 1603 Orienton. This will increase the number of Class C liquor licenses from four to five. A30 is ordinance 109-O-18, allowing extended hours of alcohol service for Z1 and Z2 liquor license holders through city council approval. A31 is extended alcohol service for one-day events, Levy Premium Food Service. These are one-day liquor licenses taking place on the dates noted here. A32 is ordinance 99-O-18, amending Class K liquor license to decrease the permanent volume of wine for off-premise consumption, permit alcoholic spirit tasting, and increase the permanent value of beer for consumption on-site. This will decrease the permanent value of wine for off-site premise consumption. A33 is ordinance 101-O-18, amending the Class U liquor license, permitted hours of sale of alcoholic liquor and eliminating the restriction of the sale of liquor, of alcohol to the lobby. A34, ordinance 100-O-18, proposed modifications to city code section 10-6, 10-11-6, section six, snow routes and snow emergency regulations contained in section 10-4-13. This will modify, these modifications will make the city code consistent with the current snow route map, existing signage, and staff operations doing snow events. A35's ordinance 40-O-17, amending city code section 7-12-4-2, lead service line replacement program. Staff is just recommending we adopt this ordinance for installation and maintenance of service pipes to your house. That is our consent agenda for Administration Public Works. I move approval.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. I just, for everybody, I just want everybody to know, since you didn't mention it, all of these items with the, all of, many, most of these items were for, for action. There were several from A19, all the liquor ones, A19 to A33, which were for introduction and action, with the exception of A31, which just requires for action this evening. And then A34 was for introduction. So, just so, we had a lot of things that, again, were for introduction and action this evening. I just wanted that clear, and that was through A19 through A33. Okay, Planning and Development Committee, could, it's me, Alderman Wilson, could you take us through that?
Thank you. Item P1 was a committee-only item with no action to be taken at council. Item P2 is landlord-tenant services contract with Metropolitan Tenants Organization and Lawyers Committee for Better Housing. This is a not-to-exceed $70,000 contract with Metropolitan Tenants Organization and Lawyers Committee for Better Housing for landlord-tenant services. The funding is from funding sources, the city's Affordable Housing Fund. That is for action. Item P3 is ordinance 41-O-18, amending city code section 16-16, table 16-B, which is the schedule of minimum off-street parking requirements. The Plan Commission and staff are recommending the council adopt the ordinance, amending those zoning ordinance to modify parking requirements for colleges and university institutions. Staff is proposing to adjust the parking requirements for dormitories and fraternities and story houses. The text amendment still requires more than the 1 to 16 ratio of students with parking permits to those eligible to obtain parking permits. The amendment would reduce the total required spaces on Northwestern campus from 4,096 to approximately 3,093. That is for introduction. Item P4, ordinance 105-O-18, amending portions of these zoning ordinance, creating brew pubs and craft alcohol production facilities. The Plan Commission and staff recommended approval of the ordinance. This authorizes zoning ordinance and text amendments to alcohol-producing units, uses rather, that include allowing brew pubs as a special use in the MXC Mixed-Used Employment District. That is for introduction. P5 is ordinance 108-O-18, special use permit and major variances for banquet hall and brew pub called Double Clutch Brewing Company at 2119-2125 Ashland Avenue. And this is authorizing special uses for banquet hall and brew pub and major zoning variances with reduced yard setbacks and reducing, or I'm sorry, eliminating a required short loading dock. That is for introduction. Item P6, ordinance 103-O-18, granting a special use for a type-two restaurant, Backlot Coffee at 204 Central, 2004 Central Street. And this is granting a special use approval for a type-two restaurant, Backlot Coffee in the B1A Business District and the OCSC Central Street Overlay District. This is also, Alderman has requested suspension of the rules, so this is for introduction and action. P7, ordinance 104-O-18, granting a special use and zoning relief to expand a daycare center for children at 2200 Main Street. This is granting special use approval to expand the daycare center for Infant Welfare Society of Evanston and allowing zoning relief for a one-story addition with a 6.1-foot west side, west interior side yard and, in the R2 Single Family District. This is also for introduction and action. P8, ordinance 102-18, I'm sorry, 102-018, granting a special use for a type-two restaurant, Kilwin's Chocolates at 1724 Sherman Avenue, granting special use for a type-two restaurant in the D2 District. This is for introduction. Item P9, ordinance 106-O-18, granting a special use for public utility and major zoning relief for a fence, which is concrete wall at 514 Custer Avenue. And this is granting the special use for replacement of existing common equipment with utility equipment and major zoning relief for a 20-foot tall fence, which is a wall for safety and thermal screening purposes at the Custer location and in the, this is in the R3 Two-Family Residential District. Item P10, ordinance 84-O-18, granting a special use for a daycare center for domestic animals and kennels called Rex's Place at 2118 through 2120 Ashland Avenue. Also, street identification of 1625 Payne Street and 2120, I'm sorry, 2147 through 2149 Dewey Avenue. And this is granting the special use approval in the MXC Mixed-Used Employment District. This is for action. Yes?
Alderman Fleming, do you have something?
I just wanted to make sure I didn't think I heard that P9 is for introduction and action. Did you say that?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, P9 is for introduction. You're right, it is. I'm sorry, you're right. I apologize. P9 was for introduction and action. Alderman Fleming had requested suspension of the rules. My apologies. Would you like me to do the appointments? Okay. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Sorry about that. We have two appointments and one reappointment. For Arts Council, we have Passion Black and Lisa Corin, and that is for action. For reappointment, we have Economic Development Committee, Haki Powell, for, as I said, reappointment, and that is for action.
And then the one other thing, so folks are aware, at the very beginning of the meeting, Alderman Revelle and then the council voted to add to the agenda for discussion the special event on September 29th, and so I've taken that off the consent agenda, and we'll talk about that last. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revelle. Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes eight to zero by the city council. Alderman Fleming, can you take us through the, the items on the APW that were taken off, starting with A4?
Yeah, A4 is change order number three to the agreement for the treated water storage replacement project engineering services with CDM Smith. Staff's recommending we authorize city manager to execute the change order number three in the amount of $22,040. Funding comes from the Water Fund Capital Improvement Account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
So I only took it off because I was voting no, but I need to have a discussion.
Okay. All right, so seeing no lights, City Clerk, could you go ahead and take the roll on A4?
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson, you get a vote as well.
All right, thank you, City Clerk. A4, change order number three to the agreement for the treated water storage replacement project engineering services with CDM Smith passes the city council on a seven to one vote. Alderman Fleming can take us to A5. Excuse me.
A11.
A11.
Yeah, A11, so the purchase of three divvy stations from Motive International Incorporated. The Parking and Transportation Committee has recommended we approve the purchase of three divvy bike stations in the amount of $33,991.96. This money comes from the parking fund, the divvy operation expenses. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, open for conversation. Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I have a question. On page 136, where it talks about the items we're purchasing, the list of purchased equipment, it talks about a backlit ad panel map frame assembly. Could somebody explain to me what that is?
Alderman Fisk, if you're familiar with the divvy station, I don't know if we can put one, a picture up quickly?
No, you don't need to put a picture, just tell me.
There's an opportunity for an ad advertisement that currently exists. So if you look at a divvy station now, there's an advertisement for North Shore Community Health Systems.
Okay, but it, and it's lit up? It's backlit?
It has the ability to be. I don't, I've never seen it operate that way in the city of Evanston.
I believe there's just a light around it so that it's more visible. It's not...
Not a box light.
It's not a beaming light, that's a light source.
Okay, so when we're talking about a solar panel and a backlit map frame assembly, are we talking about something different than exists in Evanston right now?
No, these stations are identical to what exists in Evanston.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know there. I won't be supporting this. I'm, I'm just really, I'm, I'm really troubled in the time that we're talking about the budget, about spending money, any more money on divvy. I think we've got some hard decisions to make, and I see this as a, not a, I don't know.
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
And I have previously at other meetings and over the years expressed my reservations pre, before, so I don't need to rehash them here, but it'll apply to A11, A12, and A13 for me.
I understand.
It costs you much, old technology.
All right. Okay.
Are you speaking in support or?
No.
So you're...
Oh, you're speaking against.
Speaking against it, Alderman Wilson. Okay. Alderman Revelle?
Well, I think when we've been talking about divvy before, it was costing the city a significant amount of money, and we were concerned that that was just going to go on endlessly. I think what we have now is a wonderful opportunity, first, to purchase three divvy stations and thereby expand the access of the stations to parts of the community where currently there's no divvy station within walking distance. And we can do that...
there's no Divi station within walking distance, and we can do that at an amazingly discounted price. So for 34, almost $34,000, we get $165,000 worth of Divi stations and new bicycles. And having the additional bikes also represents an opportunity then to raise additional revenues through bicycle sponsorships in 2019, because I think we're really, we're about to enter into a really strong agreement with the city of Chicago to allow the city of Evanston to realize revenues from the bike sponsorships, which we've not been able to do thus far. So the Divi program is getting, getting people out of their cars and using other modes of transportation is really important for our sustainability goals. In another few weeks, we're going to be having the third climate action plan coming to the city and with all kinds of ambitious goals, I'm sure, for reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. And I see Divi as an important part of that, our climate action efforts. And getting people on their bikes and out of their cars is really good for public health. So I just think there are innumerable reasons why we should continue to support the Divi program in Evanston, and it's looking as though in 2019, it's not only going to pay for itself, but it's going to bring in some increased revenues as well.
Thank you, Alderman Revelle. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate bicycling and all the benefits that it has, but I also just do not want to commit even at a discount to spend the money on buying new stations for the reasons of infrastructure, the reasons of cost. I have lots of concerns about, you know, I would like us to focus on people who do not use Divi. I know, I hear from lots of people in Parking and Transportation about our lack of Sunday transit options, our lack of, you know, ADA accessible transit options, and I'm, you know, I appreciate bicycling and all the benefits that it has, but I, I would like us to, you know, be more creative and think about how we can make sure that transportation options are available to people who do not bicycle. And I also, I guess, you know, I'm a little bit frustrated that even though with the purchase of these, you know, if we purchase these stations and we can move them different parts of the city, that when Divi was initially installed, it was really, you know, it seemed like there were some huge gaps of service, and we really focused on certain sides of the city, excluded other sides of the city. And so while we now have the, you know, potential to rectify that, it's at a time when our budget really, I don't think supports it. And so I wish that we had have been more mindful, I wasn't here then, but about putting these stations all around the city the first time and not kind of as a hindsight maneuver now. So anyway, so financial reasons and others, I won't support this. I would hope to be able to support 12 and 13 if I can get a little more clarity on the agreement we have with the city of Chicago for potential revenue sharing, that that's going to also last to 36 months, that we're going to move forward in a contract. I don't want to move forward in revenue sharing that maybe is only a year or two, and then we have this contract with Motivate that's actually three years. I would want to make sure that the funds are going to match the contract for the bicycles.
Alderman Fisk?
Just really briefly, it's going back to the conversation that we had a little bit earlier in Jill's presentation. It's really hard for me to talk to the small business owners in the downtown who may be faced with increased parking costs for on-street parking, for which they really depend. They, a lot of them need on-street parking for folks running in to purchase something and running out again, so they don't really rely on the parking garages. But it's hard for me to justify to them that we would be, you know, spending, what, $30,000, $33,000 on the, on three Divi stations, but also increasing their parking rates. I, I, I think we just need to look at all of this really together and think about what we're saying, you know, to those folks who, who are concerned about, about how we're spending our money and costs related to transportation.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that moving forward, we are going to have so many different forms of transportation available to our community that, and as we've seen in other parts of the country, there are going to be scooters, which we hope we will get ahead of before, before they arrive here, and the concerns about dockless bikes, dockless scooters, all kinds of different forms of transportation are coming, are literally springing up like weeds everywhere. I mean, this is one in which spending this $33,000 is, will, will allow us to put Divi stations in a broader part of the city, and I agree with you, Alderman Fleming, we should have put them in other places in the city originally, but what this does do is it allows us to have Divi stations in a wider area. We now have the Divi-for-all program that's being, that is being introduced right now this week, and by having the ability to have the station, we control where the bikes are. Whereas with dockless bikes, which may be coming, we lose control of making sure that there is, there are bikes available in the places that we think people may not be able to get access to them. So I see this as an equity issue. This is an issue where by having these additional three stations, we're providing greater access, and with the Divi-for-all program, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is $5 for a year, really is equalizing a lot of the ability to access this type of transportation. We are getting more bikes all the time on the streets. These are very well-made bikes. They're designed to be ridden on the streets. They're maintained very well. I, I see this as a really important step forward and for us in terms of maintaining and developing our bike-riding community. I mean, I recognize, Alderman Fleming, I get frustrated by bicyclists, I think, every hour, and, but they're coming, you know, and we're not going to be able to stop them. So, but this is a way for us to extend our bike-riding community in a really, for relatively little money, $33,000. And then the revenue that's going to be generated by the advertising will make this program actually more than pay for itself. So to me, this is a very smart move to make. And I know Alderman Wilson's about to say that he thinks that the technology is going to be outdated. I don't. So, or is going to be updated. And so I think this is a really smart decision for us to make. It's, we're spending $33,000 and we will immediately be, within a year or less than a year, by May of next year, we, the program will be making money. So I would urge everyone to move forward with this.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson, and then Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Okay, you know, the thing, it's an extraordinary expense. I didn't want to, it's very, very late. I didn't want to, you know, belabor this point too much, but the, my perception is, and I, I ride bicycles an awful lot, an awful, awful lot. Probably half the people in this room have seen me on a bicycle at some point. I've commuted on bicycles. I know a lot of people who commute on bicycles. Unfortunately, I don't think that, you know, based on the layout of our city, based on our train options, based on our transportation options as they exist now, this is not really a strong transportation solution. When I see, if you go to the train stations, I don't see swarms of Divis arriving at the train stations. I see swarms of people on their own bicycles arriving at the train stations. I see people at the stores arriving on their own bicycles. I have businesses complain that bicycles are locked to the meters, bicycles are locked to the trees, but they're not Divi bikes. So the transportation, yeah, the bicycles are coming, bicycles are already here, but the fact of the matter is, this is largely, in a lot of ways, it's an entertainment, it's recreational, it's a lot of fun, they're great, they're super fun, but we're subsidizing, you know, something that's more recreation-oriented as opposed to transportation-oriented. So I've gotten feedback from a lot of people, and, you know, everybody to a person thinks that they're great fun and they enjoy them, but at the same time, I don't really get the impression that these are, that they're a transportation solution for us. And again, the cost is very high. I do think that the technology is evolving, and I think that we are going to have competitors imminently, and that's going to really greatly reduce these revenue opportunities, so.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
I'm, I'm going to be supporting it based on reasons I stated earlier and those stated by other council people.
Okay, great. Alderman Wynn?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'll be really fast. With respect to the point about there will be competitors, there'll be competitors possibly who come in with their own bike systems, who underprice because that's, you know, the race to the bottom to gap, to get customers, but then they'll go away and they won't serve the broad-based community that we will be able to serve because we control the stations.
Great, thank you. Seeing no more lights, we had a motion that was seconded. City Clerk, could you take the roll on, this is on A11, the purchase of three Divi stations from Motivate International?
Certainly. There's nothing fun about Divi bikes, they're the worst bikes out there. Alderman Sufferton.
Yes.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk, I'm sorry, Alderman Fleming, it's late.
No.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
We got a four-to-four vote. Is that correct? Okay, I'm an aye on this. Okay, so A11, purchase of three Divi stations from Motivate International passes the Evanston City Council on a vote of five to four. Okay, we're going to move to A12. Alderman Fleming can take us through that.
A12 is 36-month contract extension with Motivate International Incorporated to continue operation of Divi bicycle-sharing system. This is anticipated to be, staff anticipates a 2019 budgeted amount for Divi expenses will be cost-neutral. This is for action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
At committee, Alderman Fleming had asked for an amendment to the next item, and I'll guess I will ask Alderman Fleming, will an amendment to the next item impact your vote on this item?
Yes. City Clerk, do the next item first?
So, Mr. Mayor, and if the committee chair would allow, perhaps we'd do the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go ahead and do that, so.
So, A13, Resolution 67-R-18, memorandum of understanding with the city of Chicago Department of Transportation to seek approval to share revenue in the Divi trans, Divi sponsorship agreement. And my, should I read the whole thing or just add my amendment there?
Do you have a copy of it?
No, of course not.
The Community Development Director has a, again, Mr. Mayor remembers the council, Alderman Fleming asked for an amendment that would tie any contract extension with the city of Evanston, the city of Chicago for revenue sharing to the 36-month contract extension with Divi. So the Corporation Council's prepared language, which Alderman Fleming, I think you have in your.
Yes, thank you, Corporation Council. All right, so A12, we'll read as amendment.
A13.
A13.
Sorry, A13, read this amendment. Evanston is also executing an extension agreement with Divi Motivate for three years, starting January 1st, 2019 through December 23rd, 2021. Any sponsorship agreement between Evanston and Chicago should extend to a term of at least three years to be consistent with the Divi Motivate agreement and provide for an optional extension to match city of Chicago's term with Divi Motivate to January 23rd, 2023. So that is now for action. So just to, thank you. Do I need to clarify, does everybody understand? I know it's very late. So my initial request was that I would be unable to support 12, which is a three-year extension, if I did not have clarity that our revenue share was also going to be three years. I didn't want to do revenue sharing, and it was only maybe one year, and then we have this additional two years with the bikes that are, you know, maybe not paying for themselves. So the staff was very kind to put my language into, onto paper, and so that's the amendment 13 to extend for the three years to match the contract agreement with Motivate.
Okay, all right, so was that amendment seconded?
Yes, Alderman Simmons.
Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that, that amendment to A13 passes the city council on an eight-to-zero vote. Okay, so can you put forward now A12, or why don't you put forward A13, and then we'll do A12? I just did the amendment on A, didn't I just do the amendment? Yeah.
All right, A13, Resolution 67-R-18, memorandum of understanding with the city of Chicago Department of Transportation to seek approval to share revenue in the Divi sponsorship agreement for action.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Resolution 67-R-18, the memorandum of understanding with the city of Chicago for the Divi sponsorship agreement passes along with the amendment that just passed, eight to zero. Okay, can you do A12?
A12, 36-month agreement, contract extension with Motivate International Incorporated to continue operation of.
Seven-to-one.
Excuse me, that was a seven-to-one vote, I'm sorry. Okay.
To continue operation of Divi bicycle-sharing system. This would execute a three-year contract at a cost-neutral to the city for action.
Those are money, sure.
Okay, we got Alderman Wilson?
And I'll just say, because we're buying and we have to take care of them, so I'll support taking care of the ones we're buying.
Okay, thank, thank you. All right, seeing no more lights, City Clerk, could you take the roll on A12?
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
All right, A12, 36-month contract extension with Motivate International to continue the operation of Divi bicycle-sharing program passes the Evanston City Council on a seven-to-one City Attorney, can I just ask a question on A13? I did a roll, I did a roll call vote on that. Excuse me? Because this is a contract, do I need to do a roll on that? I didn't.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. All right, so I think that takes care of everything in APW, correct? Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Alderman Revelle, can you take us through the, the item that we added, the special event of September 29th?
Sure. So we're just, we're just ready for my extra item here.
Yeah, obviously, it's not, it's not on the, on the written agenda, but if you could put forward your.
Right, so just for a little bit of background, a group called Last Call Tavern Group is applying for a special event permit to host a University of Michigan alumni event on September 29th at the third hole of the golf course at the corner of Gerard and Central. We had the neighborhood meeting that I mentioned earlier on September 12th, and after discussion, the neighbors were comfortable with our going ahead with our, going ahead with the permit But that, since that application's not ready to come to the council tonight, I'm coming to ask, to make a motion that we direct the city manager to finalize the special event permit for September 29th, and then to return to the city council on October 8th, so we can take final action and concur with the city manager's action on the permit. Second?
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
I just like to add that you may be wondering why, why we care about this, and the benefit is that it helps canal shores financially, and that's really all in our best interests to have a well-maintained, financially stable golf course, and so they have an arrangement with the Last Call Tavern Group to be, to receive $3,000 for the event.
And Alderman Wynn, this is, or Revelle, this is to be reviewed by the Special Events Committee before the city manager would make determination.
Exactly. So the city manager would be, we would direct the city manager to make sure that the application was properly submitted and that the Special Events Committee approved it and that everything was in order.
Okay. All right, so that was seconded, seeing no more lights. Can we, can we do a roll call vote on this?
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
All right, the special. All right, the special, special event item that was added tonight passes eight to zero, authorizing the city manager to use his discretion in that it will come back for a final action by this council on October 8.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now going to move to a call of the wards. So today, we will start with Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel.
Just briefly, I encourage all 7th Ward residents to come to 7th Ward meeting on Thursday, September 27, at 7 o'clock at the Evanston Ecology Center.
Terrific. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I made this via email, but I also just wanted to make a public statement. I'd like to have a report of just looking from year-to-date, 2018 compared to year-to-date 2017 for our parking enforcement, so just the number of tickets that we wrote. And I remembered that I had made this request last year during the budget season because I was concerned with the increase of, you know, parking violation fees and towing and such, that I wanted to make sure we didn't see necessarily uptake in the number of tickets we wrote, so that people didn't feel like, you know, we were using our ticket fees increases to, you know, for them to bear the brunt of our expenses. So anyway, so if I can have that report at some point during this budget cycle, I just want to make sure that we can add that to a transparency website, so it would just show how many tickets we wrote last year and how many tickets we wrote this year, is all I'm looking for.
Okay. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank the city manager for the report on the Lincoln Street Beach. As you've heard from public comment in the past, there's a community interest in the use of that beach. I think we've heard from the Dog Beach community, as well as just the general community, who will be thrilled to, to add another beach to our, public beach to our lakefront. And just kind of playing around with some numbers, I was thinking in terms of, we charge our residents for beach tokens to use the beach, and if we are entering into an agreement of any sort or conversations with Northwestern, I'd like to know who's in those meetings and what the discussion is, but also, I think it might be worth looking at as a revenue source. For example, if everyone who has a wild card on the Northwestern Evanston campus, and I think there are about maybe close to 20,000 folks on the campus, if they all had beach tokens or paid into beach tokens, that would be a revenue generator for us of $600,000 a year. So I think it's, it's serious money and probably worth looking at, the way the, the way the wall and the athletic center is configured, there is a clear intention for folks to come off the campus onto the beach, and I think we ought to take advantage of that and be creative, because we need the money.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to go back at the top of the meeting. We honored Mayor Lorraine Morton, and we also forgot, thank you.
Yeah, I meant to mention it, so it was on my notes and.
Karen Shavers, who, who we dare not forget for many years of service to Cook County, Larry Sufferton's office as an advocate, as well, prior to that, she served as the executive director of the Evanston Neighborhood Conference, for those of you that may remember, fierce advocate in the community, along with Mayor Morton, her advocacy, and service will be definitely missed, so thank you for that. And then the next thing, this Wednesday, I have a neighborhood meeting right here at G-300. We're going to be discussing the timelines for the Trammell Crowe project, as well as the Condor Development, the two senior buildings that are going to be going up in 2018? Well, within the next year. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, and thank you for, for mentioning Karen Shavers. I was texting with Commissioner Sufferton, who Karen worked for, for 13, 14 years, and he mentioned there is at some point going to be a memorial service for the, for the community for Karen, and so when that comes out, we'll let the public know about that. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Roux Simmons.
Thank you. I'd like to make a referral, I believe it's to Parking Committee, to look at ways to provide crossing guards for the 5th Ward. I understand that there is no budget for it, and there are no crossing guards. Apparently, the crossing guards are assigned based on proximity to schools, and we don't have a school in our ward, so I need us to look at ways that we can provide this service to our students in the 5th Ward. Particularly, there is an immediate need in the Hovland Court area, neighborhood. One other thing is, thank you to our staff for working to get 5th Ward resident Dower Griffin Jr., who was a prisoner of war many years ago, and he was not included in our Veterans Wall at Fountain Square. Thank you to the work of staff and the veteran groups to have him added. I took a drive by myself, and his name is there now. I hope that we will honor him in some way in the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Roux Simmons. All right, Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into executive session?
Yes, thank you. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, real estate, personal safety, and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C-1, C-5, C-8, and C-11.
Is there a second? City Clerk, could you take the roll? Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman.
I'm sorry, very late.
Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Roux Simmons.
Aye.
All right, terrific. The Evanston City Council is going to recess into executive session on an eight to zero vote. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and participating and watching at home. Good night.